Good evening. I would like to welcome everybody to the public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, July 25th, 2023. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're calling the meeting to order. We have all our commissioners here tonight. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, great. Our order tonight will be first, we'll hear from the applicant, then we'll hear from town staff, then we'll hear from members of the public, first those in favor and then those against or having questions or concerns. Then we will read some letters. I do want to make everybody aware that we did receive a lot of letters slash communications regarding this application. I believe we received about eighty-two letters against, six in favor. Those have all been received and made part of the public record. They have already been distributed to the commissioners and hopefully the commissioners have read through all of them. I know I did. So at this time, I'll turn to our applicant, the Metro Realty Management Corporation. Oh, yeah, we are going to read the public notice because it was part of the record. Thank you, Steve.
To be published in the Journal Inquirer Friday, July 14th and Thursday, July 20, 2023, South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, July 25th, 2023 at 7:00 PM at the Community Center, 150 Nevers Road to consider the following. Number one, Application 23-25P, the Metro Realty Management Corporation, requests for a zone change of approximately 4.82 acres from Buckland Gateway Development Zone to the multifamily-assisted housing MAHC. To include a portion of 240 Deming Street, 4.2 acres, and a portion of 440 Buckland Road, .36 acres, including conceptual plan in accordance with Section 7.22.2. A. This hearing is continued from July 11th, 2023. Copies of the applications are on file in the office of the Town Clerk and/or Planning Department and online at HTTPS, www.southwindsorconnecticut.gov/PlanningDepartment. Pages, Planning and Zone and Commission Applications. At this hearing, interesting persons may be heard and written comments by the public will be received by mail or email. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff Monday to Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM at 860-644-2511, extension 2329. Bart Pesakonis, Chairman, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you very much. And if anyone has a cellphone, if they could, please put it to silent. We would appreciate it. Good evening.
Is there a public comment on Section 8 or any procedural matters to discuss in that effect?
Okay, you're out of order right now. The applicant's turn to speak right now. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, Chair Pesakonis, members of the commission, town staff, members of the public. My name is Tim Hollister. I'm a land use attorney with the firm of Hinckley Allen &amp; Snyder in Hartford. And as I mentioned last time, it's been my privilege to represent Metro Realty for approximately thirty years. When we made our presentation on July 11th, it was evident that not everyone who wanted to hear what was being said was able to do so. So we asked for permission to summarize what we said on July 11th, and that's what I'd like to do now. Our first point was that Metro Realty is part of the South Windsor community, with a track record spanning more than thirty years of quality multifamily rental development totaling more than four hundred units. Watson Farms, Berry Patch One, Berry Patch Two, Hillcrest, and the residences at Oakland Road. Second, the town of South Windsor, to its credit, and on the heels of obtaining your 830G moratorium from the Connecticut Department of Housing, in 2022 adopted an affordable housing plan that recognizes the local and regional need for more lower-cost housing, and that plan identifies locations. The property that we're talking about tonight is one of those locations. Third, the proposal before you, seventy-two units, as shown on the conceptual plan, is, generally speaking, on the smaller end of real estate development, and the proposed buildings are two stories with individual entrances, no more than eight to twelve units per building, and thus the architecture and the style are intended to be, to resemble single-family homes. Fourth, our traffic engineer, Mark Vertucci, pointed out last time that one- and two-bedroom rental units generate very few peak-hour traffic trips. Meanwhile, the current zoning, Gateway Development, allows, as of right, uses that would generate up to ten to twenty times more traffic than what is proposed by this applicant. One other thing that I touched on briefly, or that Mr. Tripp touched on briefly last time that I'll just take a moment to expand upon, is the expected rents and maximum household income levels. As everyone heard, this is a so-called assisted housing with government financial support in the mix. Seventy-two units total. Fifteen of those seventy-two units will be rented at market rates projected to be in the range of eighteen hundred dollars per month for one-bedroom units, two thousand three hundred fifty dollars per month for two-bedroom units. The rest of the units will be, the rent will be based, and the maximum qualifying income will be based, on South Windsor's area median income, which in 2023 is one hundred eighteen thousand dollars. So there will be thirteen units that will be rented to households earning ninety-four thousand dollars annually or less, twenty-nine units rented to households earning fifty-nine thousand dollars or less, and fifteen units rented to households earning thirty-five thousand four hundred dollars annually or less. In addition, if the town wants to pursue another four-year moratorium from Section 830G of state statutes, construction of the plan that we're talking about tonight for 240 Deming Street will furnish more than half the points the town needs based on currently available data. So those were the points that we presented on July 11th, and I hope they'll be useful in framing the discussion tonight. One additional item I'd like to just mention is that we have read and seen concerns about overcrowded schools. It is well documented in South Windsor and everywhere else that very few school-aged children live in one- and two-bedroom rental units. The intended and actual population for units like those proposed here is older residents who want to downsize, people facing a job or other life transition, and young people who are starting out. In addition, you heard that twenty-five percent of the apartments will be reserved for adult individuals with intellectual disabilities. You heard from the leader of MARC, of Manchester Organization, that these individuals will not impact the school system or traffic. So this development will not strain the school system. Before I yield the floor, I do want to make one request on behalf of the applicant and perhaps the commission also. This is made to those who will speak, especially those in opposition. We ask you to please be specific. If you have evidence to back up your concerns, whether it's traffic, property values, whatever, we would like to hear it. Last time we were here outside the hearing room, a gentleman came up to me and he said, "I hope your application fails." And I asked him why, and he declined to answer. And that, that's his right, but that doesn't help the process. This applicant, again, a team that I have worked with for decades, is here to listen. We don't have all the answers, but we have lots of experience, and we do not want to impact neighbors. So if we have missed something, if we can improve the plan, now is the time to have that discussion. So we ask, please tell us what's on your mind and why. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will turn to our town staff, our Director of Planning, Michelle Leip.
Thank you. This is a request for a zone, can you hear me okay? Request for a zone change of approximately five point two acres of Buckland Gateway Development Zone to multifamily-assisted housing zone, including a portion of 240 Deming Street and 440 Buckland Road. It has also submitted a conceptual plan in accordance with Section 7.22.2A. This application is being submitted as a Connecticut General Statute 830G affordable housing application under our Section 7.22.2 multifamily assisted housing zoning regulations. The purpose of this regulation is to allow for assisted housing projects that qualify for publicly financed assisted housing. Commission may recall, this was part of our recent work that we did in the last year of the moratorium. One of the things that came out of that was work on this particular regulation. The applicant did provide an affordability narrative, conceptual plans, all that are on the website, traffic study for the public review. The land use process for this use requires the submission of a zone change with a concept plan, including a unit count and a proposed layout. If approved, a special exception, site plan application will be required. Enacting upon a zone change, the commission shall consider the various factors favorable and unfavorable such a change, including but not limited to the goals, objectives, and recommendations of the plan of conservation development, the purpose of the zoning regulations, I'm sorry, the purpose of zoning in these regulations, changes that have taken place in the rate and pattern of development and land use within the town and in joint communities, the supply of land available in the proposed and present zone, the physical suitability of the zone for the proposed use, the impact on the capacity of the present and proposed utilities, street drainage systems and other improvements, the general character and zoning of the neighborhood, impacts on the surrounding area, traffic congestion impacts, environmental impacts, impact on surrounding property values, health and general welfare of the community, neighborhood acceptance weighed against community needs, and the protection of historic factors. Other criteria for this zone that we put specifically in the regulations includes that it's only, can be applied to commercial, in this particular case, commercial properties that are adjacent to residential zones that are a minimum of four acres with four hundred feet of road frontage and a minimum of fifteen percent to be dedicated as conservation land. This commercial site is surrounded by residentially zoned land to the south and east and Buckland Gateway Development Zone to the north and west. I would note, both the north and west have commercial properties that are developed with housing, assisted living facilities. This particular property in Deming Street has an excess of four hundred feet of frontage on Deming Street. The current, current town plan depicts this area as commercial, which does include medium-high density residential. The town plan notes, for example, that medium-high density residential development might be limited to those areas having direct access to state routes or where they serve to buffer less dense residential developments from commercial development. Other housing strategies in our POCD include protecting established neighborhoods from business encroachment, offer a range of housing choices to help meet the needs of the community, allow flexibility in meeting emerging housing preferences and needs, support housing that helps achieve economic and transportation goals. In the Affordable Housing Plan that was adopted by the town in the June of 2022, one of the strategies identified was to increase assisted housing in town. The guide location for these types of higher-density projects includes areas of town where public water and sewer currently exists, bus transit services close by, and pedestrian amenities within walking distance to stores. We do have a map on page 22, which I think was part of the applicant's presentation that comes directly out of the Affordable Housing Plan and does show this area as a potential area for this type of development. This project will provide South Windsor with additional affordable units toward the state's 10% list. While South Windsor is currently around 6.7 of its housing stock as affordable units, based on the Affordable Housing, we did create, did receive a four-year moratorium. This is in effect until October of 2024. That just means that the town doesn't have to accept an 830G project under the law, but it still has been the commission's goal to approve affordable housing units in their different developments. I would note, you know, we did have the one-year moratorium, we didn't approve any developments. We have approved two developments that do have some affordable housing as part of what would be built, but you don't get credit for any units until they actually have a certificate of occupancy. So since we received the moratorium in 2020, we have not created any new affordable units. As required, the concept plan does show a site will have a single access drive off of Deming Street. The applicant has provided traffic report indicating the number of new trips and anticipated from the development. This was reviewed by our police department. They did not have any concerns with the report. I know they commented on, the town engineer who is not with us tonight, he did comment to the applicant about the potential of a right-turn lane, and I think that's something the applicant addressed with the commission. There is an existing sidewalk in front of the site that comes from the Buckland Road intersection that will be extended into the site. They are proposing a bus shelter along the site frontage. There is a small area of regulated wetlands in Northeastly Corner. An application has been submitted to our wetlands agency. It was, at the July 19th meeting, it was determined to hold a public hearing on this, and that public hearing will be held on September 7th. So that's the wetlands public hearing. Public water and sewer are available to the site. A letter was submitted by Connecticut Water demonstrating water capacity, and sewer information was submitted to our pollution control. Ultimately, with a site plan, water pollution control authority will be required. At site plan stage, the plans will have to demonstrate all the compliance with zoning requirements related to building height, coverage ratios, parking requirements, landscaping, open space.
We can't understand you at all, I'm sorry.
At the site plan stage, the plans will have to demonstrate compliance with zoning requirements related to building height, coverage ratio, parking requirements, landscaping the open space. The applicant will also be required to submit an affordability plan that indicates how the applicant will administer the plan for the duration of the affordability restrictions. The Architecture Design Review Committee will review the plans at the site plan submission as well. If the zone change is approved, the commission must state on the record that you found the zone change to be consistent with the town plan of conservation development and the town's affordable housing plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'll remind any speakers, please do your best to stay about one inch away from the microphone. It might sound like it's reverberating a little, but that's, I think, when, where it picks you up best. Okay, so at this time, we're going to open up to the public. First, I'll ask for anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application. Numbers have been given out when you entered the building on whether or not you wanted to speak, in for or against. So I'll ask the first person who was given the number one, if they could please step up to the microphone. When, when people are done speaking, if they could go over to the gentleman in the tan shirt and just throw your number back in his bag, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to address-
Excuse me? One inch from the microphone, please.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address this commission and all of the citizens of South Windsor and the Deming Road neighborhood. My name is Jim Clyburn, and I'm here as a father and legal guardian of my daughter, a thirty-seven-year-old resident of South Windsor, currently living at 50 Elm Street. My daughter has been disabled since birth and is not able to come forward and speak in her behalf. Wanting to be included and independent in our community, she was able to get a real job collecting a real paycheck of about twelve thousand dollars a year with training and job coaching by Mark of Manchester. That is the agency that will be supporting her in future housing. They give her some supports now, but it's not like the model that's being presented to you here tonight. With those supports, she has provided our daughter and hundreds and upon hundreds of disabled individuals for over forty, I'm sorry, over seventy years. Mark is able to help her continue to achieve independence and inclusion on the job. These individuals just want to be with everyone in their community, and South Windsor is one that welcomes inclusion and diversity and can develop supported, affordable housing. Supported means you don't just give them a key and walk away. These individuals are found to be able to do jobs, and while they don't make much, and in all the years my daughter's been working, which is about fifteen, she's only been given twenty hours of work a week. So she does get extra supports and a lot from us. About six months ago, I made multiple food deliveries to apartments in Avon, Simsbury, Canton, and Bloomfield. I had no knowledge that these deliveries were for individuals, for, for individuals with disabilities. What I discovered were very vibrant and happy individuals who had their own very safe apartments with very engaged staff working with them to be, to be as independent as possible. They're given training, safety training, how to use an oven, how to use a microwave, how to call for help. All around them were other apartments with residents of all ages, types, sizes, whatever, normal, non-disabled individuals. They were asked to dinner and family events, they went to work or training every day, they go to the same movies, bowling alleys, and restaurants everyone else does. So this is the new emerging model. These models are coming. They are in Farmington Valley, Hartford, Middlesex County, Litchfield County, and New Haven County and New London County are coming online. Besides Mark, there are many agencies that support these individuals, and many of them are operated outside of here by Metro Realty.
Excuse me? We have a three-minute limit?
Okay.
I appreciate your comments. If you would like to say more after everyone else has spoken, you're welcome to continue.
I have about a ten-second, fifteen-second paragraph, and I'm done.
Okay, please proceed.
By the way, my daughter will never be able to drive, and in this case, and with the case of most others, there's no traffic coming from her. For the first time, she'll be able to use a bus to go to her job, or she can walk to new jobs available at Evergreen Walk, get medical services, buy food, shop there, spend money there, not that she has a lot, eat there, and maybe a show or play at some time in the future. For her and others, this is an important step toward more inclusion in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as the speakers come up, we do have a three-minute time limit, so we can get as many speakers, their points out there as possible. As I said, if somebody goes over the limit, they're welcome to speak at the end after others have been heard. So we have speaker number two, if you could please come up? And if you could identify yourself for the commission?
Yes.
And one inch away from the microphone, please.
Can you hear me okay? Can everyone hear me okay? My name's Rachel Bailey. I live at 137 Orchard Hill Drive in South Windsor. I'm here to share my support of the apartment complex on Deming Street. Like most residents of South Windsor, I love that we're a family-oriented community. I love that we look out for our neighbors and our kids, and I love living here because of the values that we all share. And I'm here to give some perspective on how this apartment complex is aligned with those values. I was happy to hear that the complex will include housing for individuals with disabilities. I work with kids who have disabilities and have had many talks with their parents about their hopes and worries for their kids' futures. As kids with disabilities get older, they become adults with disabilities, and that stage of life can bring a lot of excitement and worry for their families, who, like their kids, are also getting older, and with that comes their own health concerns and limitations. I've spoken with families struggling to find housing for their adult children. Some have explored getting on waitlists that are about an hour or more away from where they live, including out of state, due to the shortages in housing. What a gift it would be to be able to allow our neighbors to stay in South Windsor, to be within a ten-minute drive of their families and the community that they already live in and that they already love. The need for this is already here. We say that we're a community that looks out for each other's kids and neighbors, so let's continue doing that by giving them a place to live. I can understand why some neighbors feel worried about this. They have a lot of big feelings about things like overcrowding, traffic noise, and crime. As our leaders, you've all reviewed the facts. You know that these fears won't come to fruition by building a modest apartment complex on Deming Street. My hope is that you help us make smart choices about meeting the housing needs of our community, and I'm asking that you vote yes on this proposal, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Could we have the number third speaker, please? And do your best, one inch away from the microphone. Thank you.
All right. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. Good evening. My name is James Bailey. I live at 137 Orchard Hill Drive. I'd like to thank the commission for the opportunity to comment on this important issue. I'm here to voice my enthusiastic support for the affordable housing proposal on Deming Street. We are facing a critical shortage of housing that is affecting both renters and prospective homeowners across our country and within our community. Many of us in this room have felt the increased pressure on family budgets due to rising housing and rental costs. The problems caused by this housing crisis are myriad, and the consequences far-reaching. But the solution is simple. We have to build more housing. Connecticut currently ranks forty-eighth in the country in new housing starts. This bodes poorly for housing affordability in our state and town. Housing cost burden is defined as spending thirty percent or more of one's income on rent or a mortgage. Currently, one out of every four South Windsor residents is experiencing housing cost burden, and nearly half of our renters are burdened by the hot costs of rent. By providing affordable housing options, we can help to alleviate this burden and allow our fellow citizens to invest in other areas of their lives, ultimately benefiting our entire community. I understand that there are concerns regarding this proposal. Some worry about traffic congestion. Fortunately, a thorough traffic study conducted by experts in their field assures us that the impact of this development on traffic flow on Deming Street will be negligible. Some homeowners are concerned about property values, so I'm sure many will be relieved to hear that studies have consistently shown that the impact of affordable housing on nearby property values is also negligible, and in some cases, property values have increased at a faster rate near affordable housing developments. So South, South Windsor homeowners such as myself can rest assured that this development will not negatively impact their property values. Safety is another concern, with claims that affordable housing will lead to an increase in crime rates. However, South Windsor's, South Windsor's existing affordable housing communities have not negatively affected crime in our community. Quite the contrary, our crime is low, our town is thriving, and continues to be one of the best small towns in America. We are in the midst of a housing crisis. We cannot afford to continue to allow progress to be impeded. By supporting the development of this affordable housing complex in South Windsor, we take a small, modest step toward building a more sustainable and inclusive community. Let us set an example for other towns by showcasing our compassion and commitment to the well-being of all our residents. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Could we have the fourth speaker in favor, please? And if I might just remind the speakers, if you could, put your, right up here, and we'll get them in there, or you can give them to the gentleman with the tan shirt.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Rebecca Schinkoff. I live at 49 Moon Place, and I've been a homeowner in town for twenty-four years. I'm here tonight to advocate for the proposed zone change to allow for the multifamily affordable and supportive housing development at 240 Deming Street. But more importantly, I'm here to advocate for those that can't advocate for themselves. I could stand here and put statistics forward to dispel many of the concerns expressed publicly on social media over the past weeks, including traffic impacts, safety concerns, impact to property values, and of course, the impact to the quality of our schools. Instead, I'm going to address the reasons we, as a community, should be in support of this zone change and proposed affordable and supportive housing development. Inclusion is a universal human right. The goal is to embrace all people irrespective of race, gender, medical, disability, or economic, or other need. It's about fighting discrimination and intolerance while allowing equal access and opportunities to everyone in this community. Striving for inclusion is essential for the removal of barriers, including the "not-in-my-neighborhood" or backyard barriers that many people with our very own, within our very own South Windsor community face each day. Metro Realty, as you know, in partnership with Mark, is proposing to build an inclusive community that would provide housing in combination with fifteen to eighteen supportive housing units designated and tailored to people with disabilities. As you're probably well aware, the town of South Windsor School District has roughly seven hundred of its forty- seven-hundred of its forty-five hundred students receiving special needs services today. These children will soon be adult residents of a town that not only need access to independent housing options, but deserve it. An inclusive community, like the one proposed, would provide equal access to and remove barriers surrounding housing. I have a seventeen-year-old daughter with intellectual disabilities, and a community like this would afford her the opportunity to live an independent life, an opportunity for her to bring value to the community, and an opportunity for her to achieve her goals and dreams like each one of us in this room today. As we listen to those opposed to this project voice their concerns about being in a long queue at a traffic light, an increase in noise levels, and the concern about the impact to our schools, I encourage you to reflect upon the positive impacts a community like this will have on our town. We, as a community, should embrace this chance to foster inclusion. Our goal, as a community, should be to establish a supportive environment that allows every individual to thrive, grow, and be an active member of the town of South Windsor, regardless of abilities. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. If we could have the fifth speaker in favor to the microphone, please?
My name is Caroline Schinkoff, and I'm here to speak in support of the proposed zone change by Metro Realty. I've been a resident of this town for twenty years and consider myself an active member of the community, having gone through the entire school system and participated in many town recreation programs. While the residents of Demming protest this proposed development because of a potential increase in traffic and the so-called "safety concerns" they say affordable housing will bring, I find that I cannot sit back and watch ignorant people derail this opportunity for the community. Metro Realty is proposing a zone change to build a community that would provide some affordable housing along with fifteen to eighteen supportive housing units specifically for individuals with disabilities. We are in the midst of an affordable housing crisis. I had the privilege of growing up in a single-family home in a private neighborhood, but I recognize that not everybody can afford that luxury. South Windsor does not yet meet the state requirement that ten percent of housing stock must qualify as affordable. Simply put, this town needs more affordable housing, and this development can help rectify that. It will provide opportunity and accessibility to all, regardless of socioeconomic status and ability. Not only will this proposed development help fulfill the need for affordable housing, but it will also fulfill the need for supportive housing. As the older sister of an individual with intellectual disabilities, I feel it is my responsibility to advocate for her and others like her as they cannot do so themselves. The past few years, my sister has talked about how she's going to have an apartment just like me when she's older. Residents with disabilities not only need access to independent housing, but they want it. They deserve to have that option and freedom of choice, just like any typical resident. Due to its proximity to public transportation and walkable amenities, this proposed development would allow individuals with disabilities to participate in and contribute to our community, adding value to not only their lives, but other residents' lives. As a community, we should embrace and encourage diversity of residents and try, strive to create an environment that accepts and supports all individuals, not just those with certain incomes or abilities. So, I hope that the commission, residents of Demming, and the entire town of South Windsor can recognize the benefits this proposed zone change and development will bring to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the sixth speaker in favor? Please step forward.
Hi, I'm Bill McAvoy.
One inch, please. One inch, yes.
Four ninety-seven Foster Street, and I'm here because this is important. We need des- we need housing desperately for many reasons like we've heard. So when someone steps up to, with a plan to build more housing, it needs to be encouraged. Of course, my knee-jerk reaction is in favor. But with something like this, I like to check the arguments against to see if they hold up when I judge. Luckily for me, I've read a list of the arguments against every day for the last month and a half. I'm thinking all those signs contain the core four objections. You know, I noticed bad landscaping didn't make the cut. The first two, traffic and overcrowding, seem pretty objective to me. I mean, is it really a public zoning meeting if someone doesn't complain about the traffic? I mean, people complain about the traffic at the cul-de-sac. One car an hour might go around the cul-de-sac. And, uh, as far as, uh, so anyway, sorry. And as far as traffic, that's why we have engineers. Engineers can, can decide about that. And as far as overcrowding goes, that's an issue that needs to be addressed whether this proposal is passed or not. Seems to me, if this proposal is denied because of overcrowding, wouldn't it be saying to everybody that South Windsor is closed? Don't even bother coming in with another housing project, 'cause we're full. I mean, if we're too full for this project, why wouldn't we be too full for another one next month with a hundred and sixty-five units? But it's the subjective exclamation points on that sign is why I'm here. You know, the ones that say "safety," "noise." And it finally hit me. They're talking about the potential residents of that new housing. And I said to myself, "I resemble that remark," 'cause I live in a house now, but I lived in an apartment for over twenty-five years. And not once, not once in twenty-five years has anyone ever accused me of being an unsafe And I'm not an anomaly. Apartment dwellers learn to live together. In fact, I say you're more likely to find an unsafe noisemaker in a house, like my neighbor who likes to shoot off fireworks at quarter of eleven freaks out my cat. She's having a tough enough time with the thunderstorms as it is. And my experience with apartment noise was very occasional, usually coming from the tenant upstairs clopping around, and it never rose to the level of a community concern. So I'm not buying the safety and noise argument. In fact, as a twenty-five-year apartment tenant, I have no idea what the safety and noise argument is. So if anyone comes up citing safety and noise, I think they need to fill in the blanks when they get up here and to say what they mean, just like the metro fellow said. Tell us what you mean by that. Now, as a sanity check, I had someone I know with P&amp;Z experience at another town take a look at the site on Google Maps. You know Satellite? And it's like, "So what's this to the right? Apartments? And Buckland Street's right there?" And he says to me, "Really? Really?" So I'm-
Excuse me, could you wind up?
Yes. I mean, you read about Port Glastonbury and all the trouble they're having with this, and they have more land than any other town in the state. But here in South Windsor, we have this proposal. It should be approved. It's something we'll be proud of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Does that complete all the speakers in favor?
I'm conflicted, so I thought I'd get ahead of the crowd. So, good evening, chairman and members of planning zoning commission. My name is Mark and Merrick Kazakowski. Um, I come here to, A sixty-three Clark Street. I come here to speak wearing three hats. First, as a town, act, current town counselor, uh, seated town counselor for the town of South Windsor. Also, as a certified planner with sixteen years, sixteen years' experience, uh, working as a town planner for various municipalities in the state of Connecticut. I've written zoning regulations in support of housing development, as well as, uh, defended against predatory affordable housing development. And thirdly, I, um, am speaking as a resident living approximately half a mile from the development site. Um, I prepared these comments, and I apologize, I will need to go a little bit beyond the allocated time, so I have a lot to cover. Um, I asked the chairman for the, uh, privilege for a little extra time, or if, uh, anybody from the public here would yield their time to me, I would appreciate it. So, I'm not going to go into the merits of affordable housing or any social, any sort of social responsibility we might have, uh, for providing affordable housing. In my opinion, any social obligation is overshadowed by state laws that look to penalize municipalities who don't meet affordable housing thresholds. Connecticut general statutes eight dash thirty-G requires municipalities to have ten percent of their housing stock meet their definition of affordable housing. If that threshold is not met, municipalities basically have to allow developers to build any size affordable housing development it wants. Um, if you've been following the legislative selection sessions over the past few years, um, these, uh, laws are probably going to get worse. Um, call it zoning reform, fair housing, call it whatever you want, the state is moving in a direction towards disqualifying towns from discretionary funding if they don't comply with new affordable housing requirements. This means state cuts off money for, money we need for schools, roads, infrastructure, in the effort to meet state housing goals. Fortunately, that is not the case what we have, but we do have to keep eight dash thirty-G in the forefront of our mind. We have already heard a lot of opposition to this project out in our community spaces. We've seen the signs, um, all this, before this public hearing even got started tonight. I want the commission and the public, uh, to be aware of what an alternative to this plan could be if the applicant was turned down and walks away. Affordable, an affordable housing, or the affordable housing moratorium expires in a year, and after that, South Windsor is no longer protected from the eight dash thirty-G appeals process. Since South Windsor falls about three-hundred-and-sixty units short of the ten percent goal, we fall victim to what I call predatory development. What that means is a developer, developer can propose an affordable multifamily development that ignores every zoning requirement, including but not limiting to density, setbacks, building height, parking, landscaping, buffers, name it, and the commission-
Merrick, I, I gotta stop you there. I apologize, but, uh, we do have a lot of other speakers.
Would, would it be okay if anybody else in favor speaks, and then I can finish up after them?
Yeah, we've-
Okay.
There's a lot of people here that want to get a chance to speak.
Okay, I'll finish up after, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, uh, with the first or the number one speaker, uh, for against, please step forward.
Good evening, chairman, members of the commission. Uh, my name is John Parks. I'm an attorney from Summers, Connecticut. With respect to this application, uh, I represent, uh, a number of neighboring property owners. They've asked me to attend tonight's meeting. Uh, I, in, in terms of your three minutes, I have three procedural matters. I, I attempted to address them under public comment, but that was out of order, so I'm gonna address three procedural issues, and then I have some substantive, substantive comments. I can limit my substantive comments to three minutes, but I don't think I need to use that with the procedural, 'cause I'm filing three motions.
Um, right now, you're speaking under public comment, so you do have three minutes.
All right. So, can I have the number two speaker give me their card so I can speak to the substantive issues, 'cause these are just procedural issues. I'm not speaking substantively.
If, if the following speaker would like to yield time to you when it comes, that'll be addressed at that time.
Thank you. So, the first thing I have is a petition, uh, under Connecticut general statutes eight dash three-B, uh, submitted by, uh, property owners within five-hundred feet of the proposed site. And my understanding is that, uh, I submit it, and the, uh, town staff will, uh, research, uh, the ownership, uh, and of the signers and calculate whether there's a twenty percent. I don't want to waste my three minutes walking it up there. I have three motions, so I'll address all three of them, and then I'll submit all three in writing to both the, uh, commission and the attorney for the applicant. The, uh, second, uh, procedural matter that I have is, I have three petitions to intervene that I'm filing under, uh, state statute, and they are fi- signed by property owners within one-hundred feet of this, uh, this, uh, proposal. The third, uh, matter that I have is, um, a motion to disqualify a member of the commission. The member is Commissioner Cavanero, and I have a, a signed petition by a number of , uh, town residents that believe based on, and, and they'll elaborate when they have their turn, on his membership in Desegregate, Connecticut, and comments concerning affordable housing that have been made, that he has predetermined or has bias in favor of affordable housing. And at this time, I'll submit all three of those, uh, petitions, and I just got the number two.
Okay. As Attorney Parks said, we will, uh, accept the petition for, um, intervenor and, uh... Would you like to speak?
Attorney Tim Hollis, I ju-
Excuse me, excuse me.
Point of order. Point-
He is the presenter, he does have a point of order. I am accepting it.
Oh, I just, I would just want to say for the record, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, none of the petitions should be accepted until the town staff has been able to verify it, and we, as the applicant, have been able to review to see if we have any objection. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't disagree with that. Just on a substantive matter, you, uh, excuse me, you have your, uh, regulation for the MAHZ zone, and the location of property for that zone is only a parcel of land zoned AA dash thirty residential and abutting real property on which there is an existing multifamily shall be proposed for inclusion in the MAHZ zone. The difference between this application and what the regulation assumed is this property contains land in two separate zones, and the residential portion doesn't comply with that because the, there is no multifamily development abutting it. It abuts, uh, over fifty-five housing, which isn't multifamily because the family part is missing. It's seniors, over fifty-five members, not an entire family. So, the residential portion, uh, doesn't comply, and that has a dramatic impact on the density, because if you look at this application, all of the housing is in the, uh, gateway zone, and they're using this residential piece that doesn't comply with your regulation as their open space to give them maximum density in the abutting piece. So, this, um, proposal doesn't meet the location requirement, and the result would be that applying for it in the gateway zone, uh, which is adjacent to the residential piece, which would dramatically reduce the density because of the property, um-
The lock club-
-coverage requirement contained in your regulation. There are other speakers that are going to address this, but thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Could we have the, uh, third speaker against, please?
Good evening, my name is Mark DeCiancia, thirty-
Excuse me, one inch from the microphone, please.
Good evening, my name is Mark DeCiancia, thirty-nine Debbie Drive.
One inch.
Good evening, my name is Mark DeCiancia, thirty-nine Debbie Drive, South Windsor, Connecticut. Um, there was a farmer here named Walkup Tunis, and they were doing a mall, I believe, probably fifty years ago, and he used this term that I'll never forget, 'cause I've lived here all my life. He said, "There's a little hanky panky going on at the town hall." And I believe today, there's a little hanky panky going on at the town hall. But the new term would be "lack of transparency." So, what's changed? I don't know what's changed. When I look at the school system, in nineteen ninety-five, my son started school, Philip R. Smith. Well, that was twenty-eight years ago. When he started school, there were six portable classrooms. Today, there's portable classrooms in South Windsor. We give tax rebates, like it's giving Halloween candy. We're heading to a paid fire department, which we don't want to talk about. We also have a big assessment that just came through this community. All we're doing is kicking the can down the road. I'm not totally against development. We need to think properly- We need to think properly when we do this, and we're not thinking properly. Our tax dollars are getting out of control. I don't know if it starts at town manager level, the mayor's level, the town council level, or the board member, but we're losing the sense of the community by kicking the can down the road, by bringing all this new development in here without thinking properly. This is gonna add a lot more expenses to this community. So when you look at your, a large pizza, there's fourteen slices, twelve goes to education, two go to the general budget. I don't know how we're gonna operate this town with two slices of pizza, because I can tell you right now, taxes are just gonna get crazier and crazier, and how people are gonna do it. All we're doing is kicking the can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and... Please, please do not do outbursts like that, thank you. And as far as the petitions, they have been accepted with the intent to verify the petitions and consult with our legal department. Thank you. At this time, I will turn to our fourth speaker against. Could we have our fourth speaker? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jack McCabe, I live at fifty-six Gilbert Lane. Thank you for allowing me to take this moment to speak. On behalf, on behalf of myself and your other constituents here in South Windsor, I'd like to point out, as before I speak about anything, is that the people who are opposed to this, as I am, are not ignorant. They're not opposed to helping the handicapped, they're not opposed to inclusion and diversity. What we are opposed to is a poorly thought-out plan to plop seventy apartments across the street from where most of us live on Demming Street. That, in my mind, will create a very negative effect on the neighborhood. We have a traffic engineer here, I don't know how much time he's spent driving the road, but I drive from West Haven or Newington every day, and I see what happens with the traffic. It is, it has become quite heavy over the past few years. If people don't think that's important, I would say otherwise. It's increasing pollution in the area, the heat, danger to pedestrians, they want all of the residents of these houses to be pedestrian. Personally, I've seen almost no pedestrians in South Windsor since I moved here in two thousand and six, but I am very afraid of the impact on the access to Demming Street. Demming Street, if you look at it, has one entrance towards Oakland and one entrance towards Buckland. That one very narrow road allows you access to the top of Demming Hill. That means any emergency vehicles that have to access there, any sanitation vehicles, police vehicles, and the residents have to access those areas strictly by Demming Street. There is no other alternative. It is one and only one road. It's only about twenty feet wide, there is no room for a sidewalk on either side. I cycle, when I cycle up and down, believe it or not, at my age, I cycle up Demming Street, but it's not easy to do with all the traffic going up and down. Also, with the installation of Costco across Buckland, the traffic has increased substantially. So when our traffic engineer is quoting the additional one car length, he's probably looking at the status of the increase in track, traffic as it has occurred today, and people are flying down Demming Street. I remember a few years ago, the police used to post a patrol car on Demming Street to control the rate of egress and ingress, and I don't see them there anymore, so the...
Can you wind up your comments?
Sure. With the introduction of seventy new apartments at one point six cars per apartment, that's a heck of a lot, that's a hundred and eight apartments, excuse me, a hundred and eight automobiles. I project that people will not restrict themselves to one point six cars, they'll be parking all over the place on Demming Hill. I wish everyone who has a handicapped relative much success, and we, we care about all of you, we just think that this is not the place or the time for this construction. It would be very deleterious to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could we have the fifth speaker against, please?
Howdy, my name is Bobby Vaquay, I live at fifty-six Gilbert Lane, and I grew up in South Windsor, and I'm a lifelong naturalist. There's been a rise in environmentalism in the U.S. over the last few years, for many climate changes on the ballot fueling impassioned protesters, and people worried for the type of future we are heading to as a species. But rampant biodiversity loss, the mass extinction of life on Earth, is one of the least talked about but deeply pressing environmental problems we must face together. The number one driver of extinction is not pollution, pollution, or even climate change, it is the intentional destruction of natural habitat, and such, and such destruction is not limited to distant lands like the Amazon or Congo rainforest, it's happening right here in the United States and most certainly in South Windsor. Growing up, I've watched the forests and grasslands that weave between neighborhoods of our hometown quietly disappear, acres of trees dispassionately cleared for McMansions and shopping districts. Projects like this probably make sense, and the folks who committed them probably had the best intentions. People need places to live and to shop, it generates jobs and commerce in town. But in the modern era, this is how forests die, not all at once, but incrementally through projects like this. The thing is that this has been known by ecologists for a long time, decades in fact. Even those with a passive environmental inclination are aware of how we are destroying the land, but even with decades of objective knowledge, I was concerned with the disregard the proposed project has to naturalistic parts of the property that were there. Rather, they're content with destroying fifty-plus-year-old trees, the wildlife corridor, because it is inconvenient for the proposed owners of the project. My fellow residents should know that their real consequence is destruction of wildlands, not just the biophilic desire to see nature protected and restored. When trees are removed from a forest, erosion and flooding go unchecked, which consequences ranging from flooded basements to the destruction of infrastructure. Bats and birds, agents that help keep bloodsucking insects at bay and disperse our seeds disappear when trees are cleared, the pollinators that help local farmers vanish, the surrounding air gets hotter as concrete and asphalt fail to dissipate heat like forest canopies or plains do. With climate change already impacting life here in the Northeast, and projected to get even worse, the need to preserve and restore natural forest habitat goes without saying. I encourage the good folks around me to reflect on the type of world that they want to help build. I do not share all the same concerns as my neighbors. I am not a homeowner or a parent. As a young person of low income and someone who struggles with mental disorders and a chronic back condition, I know that projects like these are needed. I think people of all income levels should be welcomed into South Windsor, maybe even on Demming Street, but there is no substantive reason why a development project like this couldn't be designed with the retention and restoration of what little natural spaces remain on the site. In reviewing the project proposal, I was disappointed but unsurprised to see that no such considerations were made.
Could you wrap up your comments, please?
Sure. Climate change and biodiversity loss demand, we must stop developing projects the way we always have, and yet that's exactly how this project is being pursued. If I was in any position of authority to reject this project as currently written, I would, and I implore the folks around me to do the same.
Thank you. Could we have the sixth speaker against, please?
I have copies if you want, should I give them to Michelle?
Sure.
Good evening, Vicki Margia, thirty-two Seeley Drive. I am opposed to the zoning change requested by the applicant. The neighbors have a sense, some sentiment from town staff says you knew about the gateway zone when you bought your property, so tough luck. For many of the people here tonight, that is not the case. Our selection of Seeley Drive as the place for our dream home predates the gateway zone. As a young married couple with jobs in South Windsor, my husband and I could not afford properties in town and lived in Manchester for ten years where we saved money. In nineteen ninety-four, Seeley Drive was created, and we were excited to find a rare one-acre lot in South Windsor where we could garden. The abutting land was zoned agricultural, we picked strawberries where the berry patch now is, picked blueberries where Aldi now sits. My biggest concern for my kids was that the cows that grazed in the abutting field had an electric fence at the property line. In approximately nineteen ninety-seven, the town created the gateway zone at the end of a planning and zoning meeting without much public awareness. The words from the approval were "a long Buckland road." Planning and zoning commission at the time did not know how far back from Buckland to set the zone. Eventually, without notifying abutters, they set it as far back as they could. The gateway zone was supposed to be special, with careful attention to architecture and limited types of businesses that were all upscale, no grocery stores, gas stations, drive-throughs, et cetera. The planning and zoning commission at the, the historic houses and barns were supposed to be preserved, it was supposed to be, and still should be, an attractive way to provide a much-needed tax income for the town. Planning and zoning changed the rules to allow grocery stores in the zone to accommodate Highland Park. That was one of the many times the town changed the zoning rules without notifying abutters, and it has led to significant consequences. In nineteen ninety-eight, Stop &amp; Shop tried to go in where the residence currently is. The neighborhood actively fought it, and we were pleased that planning and zoning listened to the concerns and denied that application. We hope you do so tonight. Subsequent to the Stop &amp; Shop denial, Marcia Bannock asked me to be a citizen representative for a view of the gateway zone. I was a working mom with two kids, but served because I thought it was important. In this revision, I argued against apartments and was told they were gonna be upscale apartments with no school-aged children, and they'd be located way back behind Evergreen Walk. There's a daycare near Tempo, and there's many school buses in that region. In two thousand and six, the town realized and addressed the conflict between the residential zone of Grandview Terrace and Seeley Drive and the gateway zone. Based on a proposal from Metro Realty, the town violated the rules of the gateway zone to combine properties and allow the church to separate land off and create three double A thirty lots along Demming to keep the gateway development along Buckland Road. The church had built their building, so it'd become an office building. It is a replica of an office building in town. We were told that they were not a church, it would stay built as is with new ownership. The neighbors were also told by the then mayor that there was an additional housing lot on the south side of Demming, which was granted to Bruce Kelly.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
I...
Sure.
We were told that if that lot was allowed, which is now where Awu lives, the conflict in our area would be resolved. The church benefited financially by initially selling two lots, and the neighborhood thought this fixed the area and kept the development along Buckland Road. Now the church and Metro are coming back to you for additional changes on the same land. Please honor the decision and precedent you made in two thousand and six with regards to the third housing lot. The neighbors have been asked what we want at this site. What we want in this site is what we were told in two thousand and six and what the planning and zoning created, commission created in two thousand and six. A house on the lot being proposed as the conservation land and the church to become an office building. The neighborhood has, has lived with years of construction noise thanks to the gateway zone. Our views, which contribute to the property value, have been slowly degraded. The noise level from my yard from construction forces me to go inside some days, the lights from harbors shine and are visible from my bedroom mirror. Many of the worst features of the gateway zone have come about due to zoning changes that you have not notified abutters about. This particular zoning change is one too many. It will impact our lives with additional noise, light, and traffic. Please deny it. A representative for the developers, developers said to the neighbors, "If this doesn't go in, we can put something worse there." I personally can think of nothing worse at this location. It is a disruption twenty-four seven to the abutting residential zone. The argument that this population needs access to a grocery store and a bus line. Well, if you hadn't changed the zone requirements to allow a grocery store, some of our most, most of our issues with the gateway development zone would not exist. Don't compound one bad decision with more for this neighborhood to bear. Living near the gateway development zone has been death by a thousand paper cuts. Enough is enough. Please honor the planning and zoning's two thousand and six decision and have the third lot remain a residential lot and deny this zoning change.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the number seven speaker, please?
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commission members. As residents of thirty-three Seeley Drive for over twenty-seven years, my wife and I wish to express opposition to this application for the zone change. We are not opposed to the...
Excuse me, he didn't identify himself.
Could you please identify yourselves? Thank you.
Vin Satanisi, sorry. We are not opposed to multifamily assisted housing. However, this proposed development does not fit this location or this parcel. This parcel of five point one eight acres is just one acre over the required minimum of four acres. The density is more than double other such developments, and also approximately ten times the housing density of the adjacent neighbor. As per the South Windsor Housing Affordable Plan, per section four point four, the greatest contribution to South Windsor's overall vision for the community if they are located in areas which are or will become walkable, mixed-use, and pedestrian-friendly with a sense of place. There is no sense of place for this anomalous high-density apartment complex with the adjacent lot that is conservation land. The side lot serves no purpose and is obviously the result of trying to shoehorn in an awkward design into the space as evidenced by dumpsters next to the gazebo. There are no sidewalks on which to walk to the adjacent or the nearby grocery store on Buckland Road. This is spot zoning in between a well-kept facility and a residential neighborhood. Is this real good planning and zoning practices, and is this what South Windsor is striving for? In addition, per MAS regulations, suitability, paragraph seven point two, two point four, land area and footage states, only a parcel of land zoned AA thirty and abutting real property on which there is an existing multifamily development shall be proposed for inclusion in the MAS. What multifamily housing is being counted for is meeting this requirement. The buried patch is abutting land but is not connected to Demming, and this is senior housing which has a very different demographic than an all-ages housing unit, as would be in MAS. The assisted living facility next door does not really count as multifamily, as it stated its assisted living. This is not a transition zone as the master plan calls out. This is an anomaly on both sides where the MAS is being proposed. Town staff has recommended that both the residents and the closest neighbor erect fences to mitigate concerns with the zoning change. If fences have been recommended on either side, it's not a zoning change, it's an outlier. The location clearly does not meet any of the housing plan requirements.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Traffic, let's get specific about traffic. We realize traffic studies have been performed. However, despite past traffic studies and accidents at Demming and Buckland, they've increased by two hundred and fifty percents since two thousand and nineteen. This will only worsen as traffic queuing increases and there are more cars during the present and evening hours. Per four point one five traffic requirements, section A, onsite queuing provisions must be adequate to prevent site-generated traffic from queuing on public streets. The applicant's traffic study failed to account for the high reliance of the walk signal that will be used, thus that will have a significant impact on queuing. There is a requirement for smooth, smooth flow and safe traffic within the gateway zone. The traffic queuing lanes from Buckland and Demming already fill up. This creates a safety hazard along Buckland Road. In addition, the sightlines from... In addition, the sightlines from Demming to Buckland are already compromised. The traffic, and there's additional details in my letter, the traffic cannot be supported on Demming Street. Bad weather and snow will only compound the problem, and losing momentum uphill during icy conditions will cause accidents. Per the zoning regulations, 4.15, site distance for existing and proposed traffic entering and exiting the site must be satisfactory. Per 4.15B, the design must provide safe and orderly vehicle and pedestrian flow. This cannot be accomplished. It was already talked about as Demming being used as a high cut-through. If any of you have driven up that hill during ice and bad weather, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. There have been a number of cars that have slid backwards down that high... down that road. I don't see how that can be accomplished when you have cars turning in and out and coming off of Demming Street during peak hours. It was talked about noise, specifics about noise. Playground noises are well over 100 decibels. There's a requirement at the gateway zone of 45 decibels at the property line. You can't really enforce that when you have multifamily housing activities, children playing, radios playing, so there's a requirement that cannot be enforced. Overall, we hope the commission takes a common-sense approach when considering this application, as this would cause harm to existing neighbors, the neighborhood as a whole, and pose a safety risk for those living there. Children will be playing right near that high... right near Demming Street. Thus, the right location is key for success now and future implementation of such developments. There are better-suited alternative locations, as outlined, in the South Windsor Affordable Housing Plan. Thus, based on this and the facts presented, the proposal does not meet the requirements. Therefore, we request the commission deny the proposed change. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we have the eighth speaker against, please?
Yeah, okay now? Yeah? Hi. Get my notes. Well, I had them all here, but I don't have them now. I'm not a very good speaker, but I've been living in town for 66 years.
If you could introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. Isiana Mae Davis. I live at Nine Ridge Road, which is on the corner of Demming Street. It's a private road, dead end, so we don't get much traffic except for residents that live there. But we came into our home when there was nothing there, absolutely nothing. And they used to put a snow fence up across the property to keep Demming Street from getting drifts in our driveway and our yards, because you could not get out from the snowstorms because the wind bringing the snow up. The land used to be leased and have corn one year, cabbage one year, pepper one... peppers one year, and just the minister and his house. Dick Kelly came around and asked a few residents that he was proposing to build, nobody had ever heard of it, over 55 apartments. And we fought him. We did not want the apartments, we didn't hear anything about the apartments, and the rules at that time was they could have under 55 living with them. So we immediately got concerned that on the hill that... and then he got greedy, and he wanted to build over 100 of them, rather than the original amount that he was going to build. Well, we won, and he wasn't able to build them. So instead, he put in Grandview Terrace. And in Grandview Terrace, he built some beautiful homes. Demming Street was still free. I'm not going to take up three minutes because everybody else has covered all the rest of it, but I'm telling you right now that the driveways that are spilling in, when you turn the corner onto Demming Street, are so numerous now that regardless of whether this passes, it's a hazard and it's going to... something's going to happen, and it's going to happen very soon. It's an increase of traffic that cuts through. I have aderent chairs that I sit in because we got the stop sign put in. I have walked those roads for petitions to close Slater Road when the mall went in. We have done more than we can possibly do to get the roads to be safe. It is not a safe road. And in the aderent chairs, we now have tandem trucks coming up the street. Where are they going, White Oaks? How much food have they got on there? Tandem trucks on Demming Street that take... when they stop at the stop sign, they take up my yard and the yard next door. All I'm telling you is, it's waiting for traffic hazard now. It's got nothing to do with what you're going to put in. We were involved with the rating. We were involved with calling a gateway. We didn't want Stop &amp; Shop down at the bottom of the hills. We got it where we wanted it. But you're not listening to anybody. You're not paying any attention. I'm all for all these apartments, but not there. It's not that I don't want it in my backyard, that's not it at all. I'm telling you, somebody's going to get killed, and it's going to happen before you build anything. There's five... I'm done. I told you I wasn't a good speaker.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the ninth speaker against?
Like I said, good evening. My name is Raul Cruz. I'm the... pretty much, I live in the 240 Demming Street. I'm the neighbor right across the church. I've been here in South Windsor, going to be... going to be close to a year and a half. I came from California. I'm with the Army. I've been in the Army 23 years. And one of the major reasons I moved to South Windsor is because, you know, quiet, the sense of nervous... nervous-hood, and kind of belonging. I'm against it, the only reason, the couple reasons. I'm not against the affordable housing, because everybody had to live where... but there's a lot of traffic going to Demming Street and high speed. Regardless, they put like a speedometer right in the... at the stop sign. I don't know if you've seen before, but pretty much they're using now, pretty much chasing the speed limit there. Safety, too. There's a lot of car, like I say, safety. And at the same time, how are you going to... you're going to fit 72 apartments in a small ... in a small place? I'm not against it, you know, you have affordable housing, but at the same time, there has to be like kind of common sense, how you're going to fit too many apartments in a small And the same time, the property value, too. Though I know, and even, they don't have an even a survey or research if that can increase or decrease the property value. At the same time, that can help also to the property tax. I know I've been here, and how our property tax is going to help with that, too, as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could we have the 10th speaker against, please?
Mark Bazil from 20 Sealy Drive. I'm going to use my time to read a letter from Sawood Anwar. I'm not sure if you have it on record already. Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I want to thank you for considering increasing affordable housing in South Windsor to comply with the state legislation. I recently had the opportunity to look at the site and listen to the concerns of some of the neighbors who are going to be impacted by the 72 apartment complex that is being considered off Demming Street. If one is to look at the location, the access, and the space, this project will not be safe in the current location from the density, traffic flow, and safety and space for children. Demming Street serves as one of the main access points for a significant part of South Windsor. Having the large number of proposed apartments will negatively impact every single individual driving to accessing the area via Demming Street. I believe the current site would be a reasonable option for a total of 15 apartments. The developers should consider scaling down this project to 15 apartments or study other areas of the town as possible options, where the density would not have the impact that would be in this proposed location. I want to thank each member for their volunteer work and their efforts to make our town one of the most desirable towns. I have no doubt in my mind that is through the collective efforts of the last many years of the planning and zoning members that have resulted in smart growth in our town. Sincerely, Sawood Anwar.
Thank you very much. We have the... not the 11th, the... I believe 11 and 12 had already yielded their time. The 13th speaker? Please correct me if I'm wrong on that.
John Sampl, 333 Demming Street. I've lived in this town for close to 57 years. Demming Street, I've lived on Demming Street for 34 years. And quite honestly, I can remember chasing a couple cows off of Demming Street at one time, and maybe some other animals. The point is, is that that's a farm road. I don't know if any of the board members here have taken a look at the road itself, how it raises to the center and slides out to the sides. There's quite a crown in the road. Just the other day, there were 11 children on bikes and walking on Demming Street when a semi came through with the double trailer on it and a car coming up the other way and an ambulance behind it. I closed my eyes because I really didn't want to see what actually was going to happen. I believe that we should probably put sidewalks, look into sidewalks, going at least up to Demming and... up Demming Street and at the Ridge Road and Summit for that purpose. The road needs to be widened. It does not receive a trailer truck very well when the trailer truck's tires hang over at least 10 inches over the yellow line. The widening should be looked at. I also think that the traffic study that was done by the team here, I believe it was done before the shopping centers were built, because his numbers are off, like probably about 300 a day or even an hour. Traffic has picked up quite considerably. I believe that the gateway zone has turned into what I call the dumpway zone. The gateway zone was supposed to be beautiful with a lot of amenities, and I don't see that happening along Buckland Road any longer. That's all I have. I just want to make sure that the board members take a good look at the surroundings, not just the site itself. I think that traffic is one of the biggest things, along with the light down at Buckland and Demming. Buckland and Demming should get a left-hand turn signal onto Buckland from Demming going down, and a right-hand turn... a left-hand turn signal coming up from the lower end of Demming to allow alleviation of traffic. Traffic builds up in both directions, along with the walkway, to allow people to walk across Buckland Road in that area. Timing is of the essence for people to get to work, so we need to take a look at all that. Traffic study needs to be redone.
Okay, thank you very much. Could we please have the 14th speaker against?
Jill Pasqualoni, 15 Grandview Terrace. We are not opposing this apartment complex, we are opposing its location. Anyone with any credible knowledge of this Demming Street-Buckland Street intersection will know immediately that this apartment proposal is not an ideal location for a 72-unit apartment complex, which Mr. Tripp stated has great walkability. The first time we were introduced to Mr. Tripp at Berry Patch, he brought two of the caretakers from MARK, the Special Needs Program. Mr. Tripp stated this population was a driving force behind this apartment complex. At this... at that... at this location, and this location would have the greatest of walkability to Stop &amp; Shop and Evergreen Walk for that specific population. I walked from Calvary Church today and calculated on my Health app on my phone, which is pretty accurate, maybe not exact, but close. From the Calvary Church, it's about a half-mile to Stop &amp; Shop, approximately a mile round trip. On the way back to Stop &amp; Shop, I noticed a significant incline on the Buckland Street and a greater incline, of course, up Demming Street. Did Mr. Tripp expect his clients, the special need population, to be carrying bags which would be heavy enough and hard enough from the supermarket with the distance, the inclination, the groceries, bags, etc.? It's not an easy walk. The walk to Evergreen, which Mr. Tripp said was also great walkability for shopping, is about 3/4 a mile, about two miles round trip from the proposed apartments. And again, we will be contending with the drivers going right on red. I am hoping, Mr. Tripp, you and your representatives have walked this and are aware it's not easy, physically and mentally, with the traffic you have to contend with. I hope all of you here today have taken the time to park at the existing Calvary Church and walk to Stop &amp; Shop or Evergreen Walk. It is not easy. As a matter of fact, it is extremely dangerous. There is a large amount of traffic and drivers constantly driving through the yellow and sometimes red traffic lights, most of them, or many of them, on cell phones. I live it and see it all day, every day. I am not an engineer, but I do know what is safe and unsafe. Even for someone like myself, who is fortunate enough to walk, run, bike, on my own without needing the help of an assistant, I literally have to hurry up my walk, run or bike, to make it to the other side safe. Could I finish up? Can you imagine the responsibility of these special needs assistants who not only have to take care of themselves, but several other human beings who aren't capable of walking or running as fast as most of us, and who have a harder time processing the dangers they may face, let alone the distance? If this apartment proposal was situated within Evergreen Walk or within the Stop &amp; Shop complex, then it would be fantastic and a doable... and a doable on a daily basis to walk. This is 100% not great for the special needs population for walkability. I worked with special needs for children for years, and I can tell you, the special needs population, the children, made my day, my everyday. They were the ray... my ray of sunshine and lifted my spirit and literally made my days better. I'm asking you all to walk it before you make any decision and see for yourself and ask yourself if this is the right location for this apartment complex, and ask yourself who is benefiting from this location, then confidently vote your decision.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the 15th person speaker against?
Good evening. My name's Ivy Farinella. I live at 594 Demming Street, which is on the corner of Demming and Slater Street. I'm not opposed to affordable housing or handicapped housing, but I am opposed to it there. The traffic is just... I don't know when that traffic study was done, but the traffic has increased so much since Costco went in. People zoom through the stop signs that are at Demming and Slater. I'm afraid to go to my mailbox because people just come whipping up the road. They don't even stop at the stop signs. Sometimes I have to wait while 20 cars speed by to get out of my driveway. This is just... this is just ridiculous to have this much traffic, and yes, the trucks. There's going to be a problem. This is not a large area to put in that many apartments. I'm sure there are other places that would be more appropriate. So I just wish you would really look at this. They really should do another traffic study because, really, they don't obey the stop signs now, so it's terrible. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Could we please have the sixteenth speaker against, please?
Hello, I'm Jeff Holcomb. I'm a sixty-year resident of South Windsor. I went to Whopping School. I live at thirty-three Woodmar Circle. I have a little different perspective on affordable housing. I don't oppose multifamily housing, and I think we need to do something special for those with special needs. But affordable housing, I think, has a very positive term for a negative situation in which you put people and then leave them there. They can't climb out of this on their own, they're disincentivized to do it because they'll lose their access to that same level of affordable housing, their costs will go up, they may have to leave. It's not an incentive to work beyond that twenty percent of the median income. That's by policy. There are better ways to do this, to provide places that people from impoverished areas, disadvantaged areas can move. Under this policy, who's going to look after those folks when they move here? Will anybody be incentivized to go there and ask them to dinner? Take them to church? Take them out to grocery shopping? You would if it were friends moving here, but we don't have that personal connection when we let the government policy take care of those who need assistance. We call it assistance, it's actually assisting folks to lose their roots, lose their essential humanity, because their dignity, their pride of accomplishment, their sense of self, is abrogated by us taking on that role. We don't even take it on. We can't feel dignified by placement. If we do this, we should at least reach out to the folks who actually live in these affordable housing, set aside apartments, and try to improve their lives. That's my main opposition to the project because it's part of this bigger problem of so-called affordable housing, against which the town should not be afraid of repercussions from the state. Someone mentioned previously, we might run afoul of the state imperatives, unfunded, but imperatives for us to meet certain of their goals. Whether we do that or not, it should be from what we think is the best thing, to do the best thing, the right thing. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the seventeenth speaker against?
Boyd Johnson, eighty-four Bryan Road, South Windsor. I got to listening tonight to Metro Realty, and they put up a pretty nice apartment and things, and they know what they want for money, but it's the service after the sale. And my concern is multifamily assisted housing. What's it all really mean? And are they really going to keep their word and do what they say? They were in senior housing, and it seemed to me that they were weak for helping the seniors achieve what they needed to achieve. So I am concerned about the wording. I know they put up a nice building, I'm not concerned about it, but taking care of people, that's my concern. The other concern I have is the people on Demming Street, give them a break. That's a shortcut to Evergreen Walk, it's a shortcut to Costco. I'm on the Vernon side of South Windsor, so I use it quite often myself. That's all I can tell you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the eighteenth speaker against?
Good evening, Planning Commission members, Chairman. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk. I oppose this, the plan to have these apartments. Like all, everyone else said, we are not against affordable housing, it's just that the location is not right. First of all, it is ironical that we are having this meeting for thinking about adding apartments, growing our neighborhood, our town, when we had to move the first meeting, partly because we couldn't accommodate all the people that wanted to have their voice heard in that room, which begs the question, is it, are we going on the path of sustainable growth? Is this, do we have to take a pause and look back and see how we can improve, I mean, keep all these what we want, but at, not at the cost of unsustainability? Okay, they mean, what about our schools? The high school, I understand the elementary school has been developed and expanded, but what about the high school and the middle school? Also, at the same level, if they, if, what about, like, we just have one swimming pool in the town, and basically the amenities, are we doing, going for sustainable growth or not? Then I have a question for the Metro Realty. Like, all you need to do is put yourself in our shoes, in the shoes of the residents that live on Demming and the nearby areas. Would you do that? Would you let this happen to you? That's the question I want to ask. Or if we bring this proposal to your, in a similar location, if we have this proposal, would you oppose or would you agree? I mean, I don't need an answer, I don't want to put your jobs in jeopardy. The other thing I want to say is that with Costco, we have already, and now we are coming up with Whole Foods, it is tremendous traffic, and I don't know, do, do, do I need an, do I need a PhD from, in urban planning from MIT to understand that I, adding like hundred cars, and what about their visitors? Is it not going to increase? How does, how, how can we say it's not going to increase? It's just minimal. I, I use that road all the way, Demming, what do you call it, Buckland, Oakland, and I see the traffic, the difference in traffic, try three P M., four P M., you know, peak hours. This was not the case before. Then, the reason why most of us want, I have chosen this area is because of the serenity, because of the calmness, safety, and we pay high taxes. I, I want to say that also. We, we do pay high taxes, and, and for that, all we are asking is, is not to have such kind of unsustainable development in this place. That place is definitely not the choice for this kind of development. With that, I would like to, once again, thank you for giving me the chance, and I request the Planning Board to consider the two-hundred-plus independent houses, which pump in over two million in taxes to this town, to consider our words also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excuse me, did you identify yourself?
CJ David, eighteen French.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Steve. Could we please have the nineteenth speaker against, please?
Hi, everybody. My name is Margaret Tanner Glover. I am a service-disabled combat veteran, and I wanted, I had a big speech on trees because after looking at all the different maps, the ones that were proposed and the ones that are from the town, wetlands, that, thank you, Mr. Folger, gave me, we see that you are destroying over forty trees for this development. A lot of, six, ten of them are oaks, at the caliber of either forty or forty-two, and guess what? What do trees do? They give us shade, they give us environment, they change over the carbon dioxide to oxygen. This has been the hottest month of July ever, not of July, I mean, ever. This July has been the hottest month in existence. What are we doing? We're not saving things. I am not against MAHC. I used to live in an MAHC in Manchester with my daughters while they were going to college at CCSU, and all I could afford was that. And, I thought you were reaching for the microphone, sorry, distracted me. But, um, what I want to say is that MAHC was great for us, we grew up out of it. This is the first home, I'm at two-four-seven Demming across from the church. I go to the church, and I agree with everybody else, the traffic is superhighway. I don't know when these gentlemen did their studies, they could come to my house and sit in my yard if they want to try it. I'd welcome them, I'd give them coffee, or whatever they need, water, but it's not what you're saying it is. Your traffic study is way out of date. There, it's, again, it's a superhighway. But I also want that I talk about the fact that I am not against MAHC, I'm not a NIMBY, and those signs that you see all over, that the neighborhood met, overcrowding was for this apartment complex. How you're going to fit seventy-two units in four and a half acres is beyond me and most of us. And also, the walkability, again, I don't know where your study came from, but the walkability for my house, which is across the street, is number forty-three, according to Zillow, and that means it's car necessary. So again, some of us have walked the neighborhood, some of us has taken our feet, measurements, our steps, the time, it is not walkable. It's a, that's a pipe dream. You guys need to really come back and do some studies, and I challenge you to do so. But again, I'm mostly for the trees, I'm a flaming environmentalist, as I like to say, and even as a, you know, former defense contractor and Air Force person, I want this earth to cool down, I want us to be able to live, I want us to have environmental safety, and those trees, if you have ever sat there and looked at the trees, Benjamin, there's owls in there, there's eagles, today, a bald, a golden eagle, I'm sorry, bald eagle, bald eagle, thank you, a bald eagle flew over them and landed. We have a horned owl living in there, we have red-tailed hawks living in there, so I haven't seen any of you come over, just like the other persons challenged you. You guys need to come over and look at what you're going to destroy. If you're not, if you, if you can build something like a thirty unit, great, maybe you can save those trees, but those trees are a canopy where wildlife is living. Another thing I have a problem with is what you guys said last time, is that a coffee house or a restaurant would be more traffic? That's not true. It would not be twenty-four-seven. We would welcome a medical building, we would welcome a coffee or restaurant shop, because guess what? They're going to stop at five or six o'clock, even a restaurant would stop at nine. A unit is going to be twenty-four-seven, every weekend, all the time. Raul lives right across it from, from me also, we're going to get lights in our homes. So you didn't cover that, you didn't cover the time period. You just assumed that apartment would be less than a coffee shop, or a restaurant, or a medical building. Have I reached three minutes yet? So, anyway, please consider the environment, the trees, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the twentieth speaker against, please?
My name is Virandra Shah. I'll, I'll keep it short because it's getting dinner time and past dinner time.
If you could try to stay one inch away so you can hear better.
All right.
As, as close as possible.
Is this close?
That's good, thank you.
All right. I'm not going to say much because I believe...
If you could identify yourself, please.
My name is Virandra Shah, and I live on thirty-six Castlewood Drive. We moved into town a few years ago, and we love the town, and there's a lot of new development, so we like it, but again, it comes with its own cost, which is a lot of traffic, and I have seen it grown in the last five years. I'm not an attorney, so I am not paid, but I believe we have Henley and Allen representing Metro Realty. My thing is, they're getting paid five hundred bucks an hour to say something, and it's in their client's interest. I hope that we have some people in the town that's going to have professional representation, like the gentleman right here, to speak about and against this proposal. And I believe that if this does pass, it's going to have a financial crisis also, to some extent, and also it's going to create more law and order situation in the town. When you have seventy-two units, again, I'm a numbers guy, I'm an accountant, when you have seventy-two units, you are going to have a lot more cost, and that cost has to be paid by somebody. Recently, my property tax bill came, and I was surprised, it was up by fifteen percent. And I'm looking at all the new developments, and I'm thinking, where is my money going? Probably in the education sector. Now, when you bring in seventy-two new units, you're going to have new residents, you're going to have kids, you're going to have a lot of new costs to the town in terms of law and order, in terms of various facilities that's going to be used. And the most important thing, it's going to be traffic too, and I, and I know that there's a traffic expert being brought on board to support the fact that there's going to be no traffic. I, I just don't think how that report was put together. Facts are facts, and, and, and I can tell you that you can put facts in any form and shape to give you the results you desire based on the objective of the report. So if you hire a different kind of, an expert, and you tell him that that's the objective that you want to meet, he's going to tell you, okay, there's going to be a lot more traffic. So expert reports are based on facts, and those facts can be supported either way. So again, those reports are still good, but it just depends on the ultimate objective and for whom those reports were written. They were not independent, they were written for a purpose and for a client. And at the end of the day, if the town does go forward with those projects, the money does come out of the town's pocket, which means everybody here, that's representing the town. In short, again, I oppose this project based on the traffic, the law and order situation, and also I think the town needs to look at the feasibility, the financial feasibility analysis of this project, and how it's going to impact the town's financials, because a fifteen-person raise is what you...
Can you wind up your comments, please?
Yeah, sure. I mean, if fifteen person is what I see in one year, I mean, I can only imagine how this is going to turn out in the next five to ten years. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the twenty-first speaker against?
Hello, my name is Rebecca Stewart. I live at seventy-six New Marker Road in the PRS School District. I'm speaking tonight from the perspective as a resident of South Windsor, as a parent of children in South Windsor Schools, and also as an educator, as I teach elementary school in a nearby district. I apologize for speaking fast, but I have a lot to say. I did want to thank Metro's lawyer, I think your name is Mr. Tripp, for your sincerity in your remarks earlier tonight. My quick background, I grew up here in South Windsor, this is just awkward, hold on. I grew up here in South Windsor, went to K to five, K to twelve schools here, and then left for about twenty years between college, twelve years in the Army, and then residing in Virginia after I separated from the military. My theme is that every acre of land in this town does not need to be developed. Shaponas, Shaponas Strawberries on Clark Street is now Clark Estates. There used to be a cut-through in the woods from Long Hill to Pleasant Valley, that's gone. There used to be strawberry picking on Oakland Road, that's gone, now the Berry Patch. I listened to Metro's presentation a few weeks ago and have the following comments. Metro noted a few times that this site is close to Stop &amp; Shop Plaza and ECHN Medical Offices, and stated that residents could walk to these locations. There are many assumptions with this, there, there is an assumption that residents will want to walk to these locations. We live in Connecticut, where the weather, even in the summer, such as tonight, is nasty. From December through March, snow falls along with freezing rain. Actually, the freezing rain sometimes starts in October, thinking back to 2013. Sidewalks may or may not be adequately, adequately cleared and safe to walk on. Connecticut is not a climate where people can walk places twelve months of the year. The residents can walk is a weak selling point. Additionally, there's an assumption that residents, medical providers, will be located at ECHN, and/or that residents will want to switch providers to ECHN, and/or that ECHN providers take Metro residents' insurances. Many, many assumptions. Additionally, who does their weekly grocery shopping by walking? While walking to Rita's Ice Cream may be convenient and fun every now and then... While walking to Rita's Ice Cream may be convenient and fun every now and then, the majority of coming and going in this community would likely be by car. Orchard Hill is the second largest elementary school population-wise with 631 students. That's as of September 1, 2022, and it is only increasing. Pleasant Valley is at 680, again, Orchard Hill is at 631. Think about the South Windsor Woods development in Pleasant Valley. The developer projected 21 students, short-term, 35 long-term. Actuality is that that complex has 117 students, added 117 students to our school district. Parents are desperate to move to South Windsor to get their kids in South Windsor Public Schools. And unfortunately, our schools are getting weaker because of this population increase. The increase in student population means that the PRS blacktop is getting ripped up right now, like literally, right now, to make room for two portable classrooms. Kids at PRS this year will have no basketball court during recess. Yes, there are worse things than no basketball recess. My fourth grader at PRS ate-
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. My fourth grader at PRS ate lunch at 1:35 because there are so many kids to get into lunch and the cafeteria is not large enough to hold two grade levels at the same time. Earlier in 2023, at a Board of Ed meeting, a lady spoke that her son, who is a student at DE, has to wait in line for hot lunch for 25 minutes while the entire lunch period is 30 minutes long. The increase in student population at Orchard Hill will likely create the need to hire more classroom teachers at Orchard Hill and likely push Orchard Hill over the top and need portable classrooms any day now. The high school, what would South Windsor do if we did not have Whopping School to turn into the South Windsor High School Annex? Add 15-something portables to the high school? This town education system cannot handle an apartment complex with the potential to add multiple students in the school system. While the Metro rep states that studies show a minimal school enrollment increase with these complexes, I don't believe it. The hope or the projection might be minimal increase, but actuality is, this complex will push Orchard Hill over the top. The one and two-bedroom unit is not a limitation for how many people and kids could be in the unit. I'm aware of families in similar complexes where there are three-ish children sharing a bedroom and/or sleeping on the couch because the bedroom is occupied. While there could be residents in this complex with no children or even one child, it is well-known that our school system is busting at the seams and is highly likely that families with children will fill the majority of these units. This increase is making our school system weaker. I just want to add a couple notes before I run out of time. The location from Calvary Church to here is two miles. Who walked tonight? Educational and recreational activities in town will also be affected by a rise in elementary school children, particularly Orchard Hill. After-school events like book fairs, concerts, bingo night will eventually need to be split over two nights because the Orchard Hill building itself and/or the parking lot cannot hold 600 families and students for a bingo night, movie night, book fair, chorus concert. This will create a sad divide in an elementary school where unity is so important. As an elementary school teacher myself, my largest class has been 20 students, and it is hard to meet the needs of all these students, given the time of the school day. But it's my understanding that an elementary class can max out at 25. Orchard Hill will be maxed out at 25 students per classroom. South Windsor Public Schools are full. My comments regarding South Windsor Public School scenarios is based on my attendance at Board of Ed meetings and/or the PRS PTO meeting with Dr. Carter in June. Summer activities, Parks and Rec summer camps are full in minutes, literally. About three or four years ago, I would register my daughter for Parks and Rec preschool classes, literally. In eight to 11 minutes, these classes would be full. I know this because after I registered her, I would back out of the system, log back in, and see that the classes are wait-listed. Same for swimming lessons and full-day camp at Parks and Rec. I will add that it is not the town's job to provide camp or swimming lessons, for example, but I'm telling you that the Parks and Rec system is full as well.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
I will. Thank you. I do hope that more attention is given to the concern that Alan Cavignarow should recuse himself for conflict of interest. And I would also like to state that as committee members, I thank you for serving, and also part of your responsibility is to listen to concerns of residents. The majority of speakers tonight are not in favor of Metro's proposal, along with the 80-something emails. In sum, I am not in favor of this proposal, whether this proposed location or anywhere else in South Windsor. Thank you for your time.
Could you, could the 22nd speaker, please, come up?
Sure. Mike Willett, 101 Long Meadow. Speaking because I know the neighborhood well.
Turn that mic up a little.
Sorry about that. So I used to live until last year on Cardinal, just off of Cardinal and Elmore, and now have a stepson who's living in the house and carrying on the family tradition there. We've seen the traffic increase dramatically. The one thing I wanted everybody to take into account, that doesn't include Whole Foods. Whole Foods will have, Whole Foods will have as big an impact on the traffic on Deming as Costco did. So something else to take into consideration. The traffic is out of control there and there's nothing we could do about it now, but I don't want to see that augmented by 70-plus units. The second piece, and I don't want to reiterate what everybody else said, the second challenge that this committee is going to face is if you approve this, you will most likely have to approve a similar development just across the street for the property owned by RSK Kelco. It would be impossible for you to have standing or ground to say, I'm denying another 60 units, when you just approved one across the street. So legally, I don't think we could stand in the way. And the last thing, and this is the most important thing I want you to take away tonight, the Connecticut Legislature, on the last day of the session, with three minutes to go, passed SB 998. It's also known as the Fair Share Legislation. If you look at the bill sponsor's own paperwork and the Open Communities Alliance webpage, South Windsor will be required in the next 10 years, and you should know this, to build 1,422 affordable housing units. So the committee, the Town Council, and this board needs to take that into account and develop a long-term strategy for, number one, how we're going to accommodate that with the school system, how we're going to accommodate it from a transportation point of view, and how we're going to accommodate the additional services that those additional units would absolutely add to the town burden. So for now, I think the location's just wrong. We're a representative form of government. You represent the people that are in this room, have written letters as well, overwhelming majority. Please represent the people who are saying no. It's the wrong location, it's the wrong time. And I implore you to take a look at SB 998 and figure out what you're going to need to do over the next two to three years to build a plan, because the downside of this, if we don't allow developers to build 1,422 affordable units in South Windsor, then the state mandates that the town of South Windsor has to build it and we have to pay for it. Okay? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the 23rd speaker against?
Good evening. My name is Ralph J. Riola. I reside at 552 Deming Street, which is about a half-mile east of the current Calvary Church location. And I would echo what's been said this evening already, if the commissioners have not yet driven east to the end of Deming Street where it intersects with Slater Street-
If you could, a little closer to the microphone-
I would encourage you to take a field trip and drive to the end of Deming Street where it intersects with Slater. You will find that Deming is a hilly, a narrow road. It contains dips and curves. In fact, near Slater Street, the edge of the road and the shape of the road create a blind curve. However, the views along Deming are very picturesque. Open space from a nursery, a hanging meadow, and the community gardens make it very picturesque. It gives the neighborhood a quiet rural character when the traffic is in its dead zone period, maybe around 2:00 in the afternoon. By 3:00, it's like a Speedway again. Many residents walk and cycle through the area on a daily basis as a result. And the commissioner should note that there are still single-family homes that continue to be built on Deming. One lot was just cleared last week for this purpose. I admit that I do not hold any credentials regarding analysis of traffic. However, I've been driving a wide range of motor vehicles for over half a century. In addition, I'm a retired educator who spent many a summer augmenting his income by driving professionally. I worked for roadway package system, formerly located in South Windsor, and for Hockenham Valley Community Council, providing the elderly and the disabled with dial-a-ride services. I oppose the apartment complex obtaining a zoning change because I'm confident that the traffic it generates will head east on Deming more often than selecting the Buckland Road route. This will be particularly true for residents of the apartment who commute via Interstate 84. I base this opinion on my anecdotal evidence. Over two different weeks this summer, I made test drives along both routes to Interstate 84, different times a day. I did them in early morning commute, mid-afternoon, and the evening commute. I made all six test drives, and not once did the Buckland Route come close to being faster than the Deming Route. There are three times as many traffic lights and much more traffic on Buckland than there is on Deming. And I imagine, once the school year begins, the volume in both directions will increase. Drivers from the proposed apartment complex will only exacerbate this situation. Furthermore, I hope the commissioners are aware that at least six bus runs, school bus runs, and it's not counting Greater Hartford District, I'll wrap it up soon. Six bus runs travel along Deming in addition to the side streets. I mentioned earlier, I'm a retired educator. During the final 16 years of my career, I was in daily contact with school bus drivers and school bus coordinators in order to keep my 700 students safe. In my opinion, the children assigned to the school bus stops along Deming will be placed in jeopardy as the apartment complex increases the traffic flow eastward on Deming. I have witnessed occasions when the buses hold up traffic already because a new nanny or a relative unknown to the school bus driver attempts to take a child off and the bus stays there a long time. In addition, on inclement weather days, parents park on the side streets waiting for the bus to arrive. These extra vehicles add to an already congested thoroughfare and also slow the loading and unloading of school buses. My experience working with school buses tell me it's only a matter of time before an impatient driver decides to risk the motor vehicle fine past the school bus stop sign that's out.
Please wrap up your comments.
And unfortunately, the children who are crossing the street. In my study of school law, I soon realized that there's a difference between the letter of the law and the spirit of the law, and I'm confident the commissioners know that difference as well. I urge you to reject zoning change application 2325P and allow the spirit of the law to guide you to preserve the quiet rural quality of Deming Street, and more importantly, to ensure the safety of our schoolchildren. Please do not put these kids in harm's way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the 24th speaker against, to the microphone?
Good afternoon. My name is Craig Fenn F E N N, and I live at 400 Deming Street. The reason why I moved to Deming Street was specifically for the reason of its tranquil, quiet residential area, being able to have my children be in the front yard instead of having me in the backyard. The traffic has increased exponentially over the past five to 10 years when I first moved in, and now it's really, really bad already. I can see no justification whatsoever for having 72 apartments put in on the street that's busy already. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the 25th speaker against?
I believe 25 may have left, Chairman.
Okay. Could we have the 26th?
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Azadeen. I'm 13 Gilbert Lane in South Windsor. Today, we heard a lot about traffic, about school, about density, about people walking from distance and all that stuff. Today, what I like to focus on to everybody, including the board, by the way, thank you for letting me speak, and thank you, everybody, for showing up. I'll tell you, Metro Realty, you have a battle uphill. I don't know how you're going to do with that. But today, I wanted to speak about Metro Realty, what they're doing here. They're not a charity. We all need to understand that. You know, they brought up that people with special needs and all that, we're all for that. We all want that. We all want to help each other, no problem. But why, on a prime location, on Deming Road, right off Buckland Road? Second, what I wanted to talk about, their attorney, when he stood up here and told you and told us, told everybody here, limit it to three minutes and make sure you speak if you have evidence. We're the public. We wanted to come here and speak our opinion. We wanted to raise issues, concerns for our kids, for our neighbors, for everybody that drives through that street. You cannot just stay here and tell me that I have to come here prepared, I have to hire surveyors like you did, that I don't know where you hired these people, that tells you it's only, it's only 25 trips in the morning and 28 trips in the afternoon. What I want, I used to serve at the Board of Commissioners for the Great City of New Britain, and I served for a long time. And that would never flew over our board when an attorney stands up here and tells the people that you need to have evidence in order for you to speak at this proposal. I urge you, and I request from you, to reject this. There are so many people. You're our voice, you're our tools. We are telling you, we don't want that project, we don't want that and that specific location. South Windsor is huge. Find another location, we'll be all for it. Not there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the 27th speaker against, to the microphone?
Hello. Thank you for having the chance to speak. My name is Khalid of 1136 Grandview Terrace, very close to the proposed site. I didn't, I couldn't help but find out that the people who opposed, I mean, who agreed on the project live far from the proposed site. Now, out of experience, my son passed away June 1, and just last June. When my friends came to visit me to pay their respect and help, the street was blocked. The cops had to call me. They couldn't handle the traffic. I had to call a valet service to come and help park in the cars. 50 cars destroyed the whole area, so let alone what the project will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we please have the 28th speaker against, to the microphone? Do we have the 28th speaker? If not, the 29th?
I actually have a 29th card already, so I would go on to 30.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Locke Fo from 260 Deming Street. While I recognize the critical need for affordable housing and understand the immense pressure that the town is facing to create more affordable housing, as an abutter to the subject property and a concerned citizen, I oppose this application for the reasons of public health and safety. We contacted the South Windsor Police Department and compared a complete 12 months before the pandemic to the same 12 months recently. Accidents in our intersections went up 250%. That's nothing to blink an eye about. Do UConn crash repository data used in the traffic study supports this? Excluding major highways 291 and Route 5, when you compare the total mileage of any road against the number of accidents, Buckland Road has tripled the number of accidents per mile since 2021. The most dangerous road- The most dangerous road in town we have is Buckland. So Buckland Road is a little over 1.3 miles, where mile marker .41 has the highest number of reported accidents, just reported. Mile marker .41 is the intersection of Buckland and Demming. Two weeks ago, the presentation identified the number one reason why this site made sense was the perfect location for multifamily housing. That was walkability and pedestrian accessibility. There was a slide with dotted lines to show where sidewalks were around the area. Well, those were dotted lines. It was verbalized that only one side of Buckland had continuous sidewalks. That's the opposite side from where this site is going to be. So in order to fit this narrative of a perfect location, you're asking for maybe 150 in 72 units to cross the most dangerous intersection in town? Because of that, I absolutely do not think this is a safe, safe place to be, or I'm sorry, safe location for this project to be and literally an accident waiting to happen. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the 31st speaker?
Good evening. My name is Anita Attenisi, and I live on 33 Sealy Drive.
A little closer to the microphone, if you could.
Okay. So if you search online for the role of planning and zoning in communities, you will get the following. Communities use zoning to protect the value of property, prevent the establishment of nuisance, ensures capability between adjacent uses of land, land protect, and properly use natural resources. This proposal's zone changes fails on all accounts. The location has a negative effect on the quality of life property value of the neighbors. The view of the sunset from the elevated hills is remarkable. The removal of the trees that screen the residence's three-story building alone is enough close property value to lose property value. Metro Realty has a track record of not maintaining their properties, which will impact neighborhood property values. The residence stands to lose property value as well as the potential incoming population deems to less safe. Assistant living is very expensive, and families have a choice where to house their loved ones. The property value of the residence is not insignificant. There is potential of nuisance of noise, lighting, traffic, rodent population at the dumpsters, pedestrians' cut-throughs, and inappropriate use of the conservation land. Given that there is no recreation space with the high-density lots, the conservation area will become the location for overflowing parking, playground activity, picnics with music about the 45 decimals, pet relief, and the whole other misuse additional uses. The land is not compatible between adjacent uses, as evidenced by the entire neighborhood here, as well as the opposition we know is at the residence. The difference in the density of population from the residency of about 65 households per acre to 13.9 household per acre in certain to create conflict. The elderly population on two sides, the AA-30 single-family house and on the other two, will be dramatically impacted this 24/7 activity. Walkers to the bus stop will cut through the residence's property and create an unsafe feeling for those able to walk, to use this walkway on their property. Destroying the numerous trees, disrupt wetlands, and eliminating the wildlife translation path, which currently exists along the west side in what the children in our neighborhood call the Great Valley. The area are proposed a conservation land in a monocultural with limited conservation value, unlike other locations at the property. It protects nothing. We were told by town representatives that the town had resolved the conflict that created by not thinking through how deep the gateway zone go when, back in the 2006 petition by Metro Realty to create the three housing lots along Demming. Based on this, our family decided to stay in our home and added an additional, and added a significant addition. People have made life decisions based on the previous decisions.
Could you wrap up your comments, please?
The town of South Windsor Affordable Housing Plan recommends town-owned property for this type of development. This would be a great test of this zone. Zone regulations should be a tool, town, zoning regulations should be a tool that townspeople have to shape the town, not a tool for developers to get what they want. There are other locations in town without adding 72 neighbors to the AA-30 residential zone. We are reasonable people, and this is an unreasonable use. Please deny the zone change. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we please have the 32nd speaker?
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Srinivas Vamuri. I live on 364 Demming. Sorry, tall people problems. All right. I live on 364 Demming, and again, just want to thank everybody here, especially the board. One thing I would like to thank, because this is a thankless job. I know you guys are, become a punching bag sometimes, but again, this is a public forum, so hopefully you guys are here to take our input. First off, I would like to clarify what this is not about. I am not opposed to affordability housing or helping the disabled. I want to make sure that we understand that things don't have to be mutually exclusive. Second, my family and I, we moved here 14 years ago on Demming. 14 years ago, we were actually second-guessing ourselves because we thought Demming was too busy. Boy, we were for a big surprise. Now with Costco and no sidewalks on Demming, the traffic is unbearable. I walk my dog on the daily, and I have to hop onto somebody's lawn in order to avoid incoming traffic. I don't want to be the cause for holding up the traffic, but at the same time, it is of concern for public safety. With Costco there, with Whole Foods coming up, and there is a doctor's office coming up at the end of the street as well, this is going to significantly impact the amount of vehicles that are going to come in. I have twin boys who are in middle school, and we went through Orchard School System. I am gratefully thankful that South Windsor is a desirable location, and everybody wants to move here. And I don't want to say there should not be any development. I think there should be, but we need to have a holistic approach on what that impact is going to be on South Windsor, on the taxpayers, on all of us as a whole. Please consider input from the Education Department. Please consider the input from the public in doing a proper study and thinking this through before you approve this. Again, just to be clear, it's the scale of the project that people are opposing. And personally, I think this is a safety hazard, and this need to be thought through. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the 33rd speaker?
Hello, everyone. My name is Mohan Kucharla, and I reside at 45 Sealy Drive. I'm just scratching my head right now because whatever I wanted to speak, everybody over here spoke about it. So I thought, what's the unique thing that comes to my mind if I want to speak out? And the unique thing that comes to my mind is I am a father of a special-needs child, okay? And my child has blossomed in this town. This town has given him enough support that I envision him leading an independent life in years to come. The very aspect of a special need when we discuss about things that I want individuals and gentlemen on my right-hand side to understand that a special-needs child needs a calm environment. Now, you're trying to put these special-needs kids, kids, or families, or individuals at a busy intersection? That doesn't jibe well with me. So think twice before even thinking about what are you trying to do? You're trying to help this group of people who need calmness in life. So that is a basic rationale that we all can decide. It's not a million-dollar question what's in our head. As basic individuals who have aged gracefully, we can make that call. The other thing that runs into my mind at this point of time is I have to take my two little kids for them to board their bus across the street. My little child, who's in grade four, he's noticing that his bus is arriving five or 10 minutes late than before, and when he hops onto the bus, oh, we got delayed because there was a traffic holdup. So this is little children telling us, why are these delays happening? Traffic is a huge thing. And we're doing these studies by experts who are defying what a fourth grader is telling us what to do. Wait, Dad, why is this happening? The other day, to my irony, we were all standing at this bus stop, and this bus pulled its stop sign that was popping out. And one of the car just, I think the gentleman was getting laid to his work or whatever, zoomed past this. Imagine if my child was crossing that street. Now, you're talking about 71 units or something? Wouldn't these kiddos be standing outside? And if something were to happen, who do we curse? It is this collective group which is sitting right here is going to make a decision on this? I mean, it's not rocket science for us to see which side this application goes with these things bound to happen. Few days ago, I was at this M&amp;T bank. There were 12 cars ahead of me to access my ATM. I had to wait 12 minutes. If these 71 residents opened their bank accounts, at least 20 of them, because hey, the bank is just across the street, I can take a few steps. These 12 cars will now be protruding into Demming Street, and the traffic going to Buckland would be at a halt. With the dermatology office coming up, that'll be more.
Please wrap up your comments.
All right. I think in its entirety, what I would suggest is there are enough logical points for us to move forward to deny this application. Thank you so much, and I hope you have a safe ride back home.
Thank you. Could we please have the 34th speaker?
Good evening. Oh, can you hear me? Oh, okay. Okay, I can look closer. Okay, thank you. Okay, good evening. My name is Rosalyn Hoagland, Rosalyn Hoagland, and I live at 276 Cory Brook Drive. I'm nowhere near Demming Street. I'm on my Pleasant Valley area. I am not, I am supportive of affordable housing, and I've listened to both sides, everyone, what they're saying. And my concern is, what is the cost to the citizens of South Windsor? I moved in South Windsor in 1984. There was cornfields. There was a strawberry patch. There was no Buckland Mall. There was no Target. There was no Evergreen Walk. And I saw a lot of this grow up real fast. And the Home Depot, the Coca-Cola factory, and then it came to the schools. And my concern right now is the kids. Because it took us 10 years to fix up every one of the elementary schools to only find out the schools are not big enough. We need more schools, we need more buildings. We need bigger buildings. I looked at Pleasant Valley, because my daughters went to Pleasant Valley, and it was a small, nice, little quaint little school, and I loved it. And have you seen Pleasant Valley now? It's humongous. I mean, is Pleasant Valley going to be an elementary school, or they're going to switch it to a high school? Or is it going to be Pleasant Valley Learning Center? And my concern right now is with, I know the people on Demming, they don't want it in Demming. I'm concerned about it being anywhere in South Windsor. I'm saying, maybe we should look at a 10-year plan as far as, I know affordable housing. I am very much for affordable housing. I know they have affordable housing. My daughters, they're looking for houses. They're not in Connecticut, but one is down in Fairfield, and forget about Fairfield. Their housing, they have housing issues. And the other one's in DC, another place where affordable housing, we're not talking low-income, middle-income, we're talking about everyone. But the thing is that we need, how does it, how when you have more kids, more this, how does it impact the town? I'm hearing sidewalks. They may need sidewalks. I'm hearing that police may need more increase in police. That's going to impact the budget. So therefore, I'm not saying, don't say, I'm not saying no affordable housing. I'm saying, maybe we need a bigger plan. It seems like everything is happening so fast, so very, very fast. I mean, we went from a small bedroom community to Target, Costco, Whole Foods, and so much stuff. And it would be nice to have parks, a recreational center with a swimming pool. Every other town has a swimming pool, but South Windsor, I would love us to have a swimming pool. So all I'm saying is that...
Could you please wrap up your comments?
Yes, I will wrap it up right now. Okay, my only thought is, is that I'm not saying, I'm saying that for us to look back and see, what is this going to cost? I don't want it to cost, we need a new high school. We may need a bigger high school. It's sorry that we're using the WAPIS as an annex. We may need a bigger middle school. And that is, by us doing this, or by us bringing in affordable housing and low-income housing, how will that impact the budget? Are we going to have to say no to middle schools, high schools, parks, rec, things for the kids in South Windsor? And that's all. Okay, thank you, and have a nice evening.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the 35th speaker?
We may be towards the end here.
Are there any other speakers with other? Oh, you didn't? Please, pardon me? Okay, we have 36. What do we have back there?
37.
37, 36, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Albert Allard, and I live at 247 Demming Street, and I'm opposed to the zoning change requested by...
Excuse me, could you tilt the microphone down and speak into it, please?
Better?
Yes, much.
I'm opposed to the zoning change requested by the applicant Metro Realty. When this parcel stays as a gateway development zone parcel, some of the benefits are as follows. 4.2.1 Purpose of the GD. High-quality development with careful attention to appearance of buildings and professional landscaping. These are no amenity housings, which is the antithesis of high-quality development. The proposed plan is too dense for this location, and the residences... For this location, appearance of the balconies will be an issue. These balconies will be visible from Demming, Angry Ambeau Terrace, and the residences. Given the location on the hill, there is no screening that will remove this eyesore. People use balconies for storage of household items, toys, trash, and more. And there's photos to prove. Has gas tanks, grills, toys, bikes. And then the landscaping of Metro Realty. The first meeting that Metro Realty invited the neighbors to was at Berry Patch. One key thing we noticed was that landscaping was deficient, grass, weeds, et cetera. When we mentioned it to Mr. Tripp, his reply was, this is handled by a third party. After a subsequent meeting, Mr. Tripp was happy to report the landscaping had been addressed. There are still sawed-off bushes near dumpsters, tree stumps all over the property, weeds in all the garden beds, invasive species growing in the siding, in the bushes, and everywhere else you can imagine. While the landscaping at the residence is professional, the level from Metro Realty is far below the professional standards of the gateway zone. This lack of professional landscaping transfers to all the metro properties we visited, which Watson Farms has ten stumps. which Watson Farms has 10 stumps. Metro may have a great reputation for building properties, but they fail in the maintenance department. I invite the Commission to do a drive-through of the Metro properties in South Windsor. Past performance is the best indicator of future performance. Metro will not likely meet the Gateway Zone standard, or any reasonable standard, with their maintenance and landscaping. 4.2.9H of the Gateway Development Zone. Areas reserved for open space shall be distributed throughout the site. If there's a change in the present zoning, this open space slash conservation land is building a lot off to one side. It's not distributed. It's awkward and likely to be misused and become a nuisance. And three minutes is not enough time, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we please have the 37th speaker?
Rich Delay, 95 Cody Circle. I just want to say, clearly there are reasonable people on both sides of this debate, and I thank everyone for participating. Clearly, or, excuse me, I would have spoken in favor of this development if this proposal was in compliance with South Windsor zoning regulations. It is not. First, Section 7.2218 Conflict of Provision states, "If any provision of the, of this MAHZ regulation conflicts with the generally applicable provision of the South Windsor zoning regulations, the provisions of this section 7.2 will control." The language is included because of the provisions of this section are more restrictive than the general regulation. Secondly, Section 7.224 Location, Land Area, and Frontage states, "Only a parcel of land zone AA-30 residential and abutting real property on which there is an existing multifamily development shall be proposed for inclusion in the MAHZ. Commercial properties adjacent to the residential areas may be considered for an MAHZ." Let me repeat that. Commercial properties adjacent to the residential areas may be considered for an MAHZ. This proposal asks the Commission to consider the MH, MAHZ for two separate properties which are currently bound, sorry, the two properties are 240 Demming and a portion of 440 Buckland, which are currently bound in no legal manner. The distinct .38 acre property of 440 Buckland is presently zoned commercial, Gateway Zone, and does not abut any residential property. The fact that the .36 portion of the 440 Buckland and 240 Demming could be combined after the fact does not comply with the specific regulation only for the MAZH, or HZ, where all included commercial properties must abut residential zones to even be considered. This is different language than the regular applications you usually have in front of you. I assume the developer added this small property, it seems very weird that they do, to meet the 15% building footprint threshold for the MAHZ property to strictly maximize the amount of apartments that they can have. The applicant, the applicant may go through the, instead, the applicant can go through the resubmission, the re-subdivision process, which is currently in place and re, in advance, and then resubmit this application as-is when the 240 Demming is combined and the 5.18 acres is all zoned residential. Or, as Senator Anwar thoughtfully suggests, it needs to be resubmitted with a smaller, less intense proposal with less apartments. Thank you very much, I appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you. Could we please have, I believe it's the 30, Rich, you were what number?
37.
Okay, could we have the 38th, please?
My name is Anthony Amato, and I live at 2 Elmore Way, up off of Demming. I actually was fortunate enough to grow up there, up off of Demming. I lived there before there was a stop sign in the middle of Demming. I lived there before there, when there was a farm there instead of Pasta Vita. And I lived in this town and was fortunate enough to go to school here before there were portables in some of the schools. I unfortunately missed some of the comments earlier. I was putting my young children to bed. I wish I was able to be here for that, but I also didn't come here with the intention of speaking. I was moved to, when my new favorite neighbor mentioned the comment made to only come with facts. You're paid to do that for your, by your client, I'm not. What I do know is that we should not have a Parks and Rec signup period that is like a Ticketmaster on sale. I know that we have rebuilt all of our schools and, you know, I don't have the facts, but I can imagine that we are going to be busting at the seams again very soon. As everyone here, neighbors, folks from across the town have come with anecdotal evidence, with facts. I'm not going to rehash all of that, but I do implore you to be our voice for the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we please have the 39th, the 39th speaker?
I got my ticket. Good afternoon, good evening again, Rebecca Stewart, 76 New Marker Road. I just wanted to speak again with evidence to shed light on school population numbers. I also wanted to restate my final comment where I was completely against this proposal. I would like to reword that, that I am not against appropriate housing for special needs or affordable housing. However, let's relook at this and let's scale it back. Let's drop it by 2/3, down to 24 apartments. As the Metro presenter mentioned earlier tonight, you know, maybe we can reach some, some sort of compromise, but I do want to shed light on school population numbers. I'm getting ready to throw a lot of numbers down. I'll try and be clear. The five-year enrollment trends from October 2017 till October 2021, these numbers are coming from projections from SLAM Collaborative, November 2021. I cannot state for sure, but I would guess that these numbers do not include the possibility of children in this complex, and a high number of children in this complex. From October 2017 till October 2021, South Windsor Public Schools have increased in enrollment by 23%. That's at the K to 5 level. At the K to 12 level, we've increased by 13.9%. Speaking of the high school, South Windsor High School this year graduated 300-something students, yet they are receiving 400-something 9th graders. And those numbers are from a friend of mine who is at the administration, administrative level at one of our schools. Since 2015, let me backtrack. These slides right here were given to me and spoken about by and from Dr. Carter at a PRS PTO meeting in June. She was kind enough to spend almost three hours with us. So that is where these numbers and the slide is coming from. Since 2015, pre-K to 12 enrollment has increased by 770 students and is projected to increase by an additional 683 students by 2031. This would result in an additional 1453 students between 2015 and 2031. The 2022 projection was 3,485 students, 3485 students. Actuality is 4884. 1,399 more students than originally projected in 2013. If that doesn't show that South Windsor Public Schools, we are bursting. I really don't know what else. These numbers are not lying. South Windsor Woods, again, over in Pleasant Valley. 21 short-term students projected, 35 long-term, I'll wrap it up.
Please wrap it up.
Yep, and 117 actual. PRS has two portables that are being attached right now. Orchard Hill's going to be next with needing portables. And then it's only a matter of time before we need to do something about TE. And then the high school, again, what would we do if we did not have Wapping as a backup for the annex? This complex will likely push everything over the edge, especially for the Orchard Hill District. And please take that into great concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could we please have the 40th speaker? Do we have a 40? Thank you.
My name, excuse me, my name is Sue Larson from 350 Demming Street. You've already heard pretty much the kinds of things that I would have been talking about, but I did want to bring some facts to the, to this commission. Sorry about my voice. I took a little bit of a traffic study over the weekend to see what kind of traffic we really do have, because everybody talks about traffic, traffic, traffic. So anyway, when my husband and I first moved in about 39 years ago, Sunday mornings were extremely quiet. You might see one, two cars an hour, that would be about it. Sunday morning from 8 to 9 were 68 cars. 9 to 10 was 125. Saturday afternoon is just casual driving, no buses, no parents dropping their kids off at school either at Orchard Hill or TE, no delivery trucks. On Saturday afternoon, between 3 and 4, 310. Between 2 and 3, 263 cars. So, there's some facts that are for you to consider.
This is on Demming, correct?
This is on Demming, correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a 41st speaker?
Hello, good evening. Dennis Cow, 58 Sealy Drive. I just want to say that Metro is a business, right? They're here to maximize their profit, maximize income. We, as citizens and residents of South Windsor, we have not expressed that we are against affordable housing or special needs. We share the same sentiment that Metro had shared. For affordable housing, for special needs. But I think a lot of us have also said about the safety, the safety of the road, the location. I urge the Commissioner to reject this application at this location for this size. If Metro really cares about what they're trying to pitch and sell, then they can either find another location or significantly scale down their request for this location. But I bet you, they probably won't, and they'll walk away if it's not profitable.
Thank you. Could we have your card? You can put it right here, it's fine. 42nd speaker?
I guess I'll just try to do it this way. Can you hear me okay? All right, Mike Fisher, 38 Red Rock Lane. The good news is, I think I'm the last speaker, so we're about at the end. I didn't plan to speak tonight because I figured by now, every argument would have been made, every point would have been made, and there wouldn't be left, much left to say. I think the one thing that I didn't hear much of tonight, I only heard it one time, and that was with the 31st speaker, is what does this development do to our property values? That is the bottom line, in my mind, okay? I've been a resident of South Windsor for 23 years. I've been in my current house for 17 years. And in 17 years, my property taxes have gone up over 65%. Okay? So, what is a 57, 58, low to middle-income units due to my property value? I live less than a mile away from this proposed development. And as another gentleman said tonight, if you approve this development, it'll be a matter of no time before another developer will be in here wanting to put a development, a similar development across the street, in the land across the street. When does it end? Once you start this, when does it end? It's not to say that we're against low to medium-income housing. It's not, we're against helping special needs people. I think the special needs apartments are wonderful, but there's only 15 of those. Let's not lose sight of that. There's 15 of those. There's 58 low to medium-income housing units. And then, what, another 100, 150 come in across the street, and so forth and so on? And we have Watson Farms down at the other end of Demming, let's not forget. We have Berry Patch. How many of these units are we going to put in this neighborhood? So, you know, traffic, school congestion, noise, secure, congestion, lights and everything, those are convenience issues, I think. The real bottom line is, it's incumbent upon you, as the zoning board, to preserve and protect our home values. And I don't see how allowing this, this development is doing that. I can see our property values plummeting, but yet our property taxes still staying where they are or going up higher because now we have to support low and medium-income families. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers who have not spoken yet? If not, oh, okay.
Hi, I'm John Stangle.
Turn the microphone, please.
John Stangle from 5 Red Rock Lane. We've had good arguments tonight on both sides. I know you guys have a hard decision ahead of you. I just want to say that I am opposed to the petition that went around regarding Commissioner Kavanaugh. I don't think, before you closed public hearing, I wanted to just say, I don't know what the procedure would be, but I hope he's not forced to recuse himself. My understanding is, the town attorney and planner have all weighed in and said that there's no conflict of interest. He has no financial interest in the outcome. He was duly elected. All of you guys are going to make a vote based on your education, your principles, and what you heard tonight. And I hope he's given the same opportunity. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. I know we had two speakers who wanted additional time and weren't provided so far, so I would like to give them the opportunity if there's no other speakers who have not spoken yet. So... So you would like time also? Okay. Could the other two speakers speak? Okay. So, Mark, you had the first one. Again, please identify yourself.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm Mark Azakowski, 863 Clark Street. Just wanted quickly to summarize my diatribe earlier on state laws regarding affordable housing. And I purposely laid it thick because the issue of affordable housing is bigger than, bigger than our town. And if the fate of this site rises above and out of control of this commission, our local concerns of traffic, impacts on our schools and our budgets are going to fall on deaf ears. So I think it's very important that the issues that have come out tonight, and in all the letters, and any comments that the commission may have, are settled right here in this room, with the people in this room. So, move on to my comments. I'd like to thank Mr. Tripp from Metro Realty and his team for their presentation at the last meeting. Since we must provide affordable housing, I'd actually prefer Metro Realty to do it. They have been a good partner for the town and other municipalities. They are skilled and knowledgeable in navigating the financing process. And I believe that they have the good sense on how they can adjust plans to suit the needs, the town's needs, and still remain competitive for state financing. Mr. Tripp described very briefly how the construction of this project is dependent on financing from the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. And this financing is granted on a very competitive basis. He further noted that there are two most important factors that are used for evaluating financing applications. First has to do with location. And with Mr. Tripp, I do concur that this site hits every checkbox, on paper at least, and will look very favorable for competitive state funding. It's a large site, relatively flat, mostly cleared, has access to water and sewer. It's very close proximity to public transportation. There's grocery stores, medical, retail, personal services, all within walking distance. personal services, all within walking distance. I'll also note that if you go on the website of the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, it lists the entirety of South Windsor as a, quote, "very high opportunity area for competitive funding." Secondly, Mr. Tripp stated that experience is a second factor that carries the most weight in financing decisions, and he lauded his company's capabilities. My hope that, given the site's desirability and the company's expertise, we can have a plan that offers fewer units, more buffers, and other mitigation measures to lessen the impact and burden on surrounding neighborhoods. I do have some questions, seeking some clarity, and want to offer some, and seek some opportunities to make the plan better. The application was submitted as a rezoning to multifamily assisted housing zone, which is not an application for a site plan. I would like the applicant to clarify the process for which they plan to achieve the land use approvals necessary to complete this project. Maybe they can play out two scenarios for us. One is if this rezoning application were approved, and another scenario is if it were denied. In the presentation, Mr. Tripp glossed over the affordability component when he showed a slide about the makeup of the units and how the, how that will qualify for various percentages of area median income. It would be helpful if you can expand on that and describe the affordability component in real numbers and show us what income levels can afford these units. Also, I'd like to see at least an outline of a marketing plan of how current South Windsor residents will be targeted and given priority residency. There are needs for affordable housing for members in our community, and this development can provide many, many a chance to age in place and stay here in town. I was moved by the presentation by Mr. Zingler of Mark describing their mission to provide supporting housing for people with disabilities. In our town, we currently have adults and elderly parents who house and care for their adult children with disabilities. This development could provide peace of mind for these parents, knowing that their sons and daughters can live somewhat independently in town. We heard from some of them earlier today. But most importantly, these adults with disabilities will have an opportunity to live with dignity in the community that they are most familiar with. This could provide an opportunity for them to walk to their grocery store, walk to work, maybe get a haircut, walk to their favorite restaurants, or even walk to their own church. I'd like the applicant to expand upon how Mark will target and make these lowest-income units available to these individuals already living within our community. I ask Metro Realty to consider reducing the unit count in favor of increasing buffers and landscape screening for adjacent residential properties. I'm curious why the driveways are nearly double the size required for ingress and egress, and ask them to consider reducing the massive curb cut that spans sixty-five feet of sidewalk. Walking along sidewalks and across wide driveways is extremely unnerving, and pedestrians, when they do so, feel unsafe. The driveway could also be separated into two driveways of a more residential scale. I suggest moving the bus shelter to Buckland Road. Traveling on Deming Street can be challenging for cars, especially in the winter, and it will make, and it will make more dangerous navigating around large transit buses. And I further agree with some testimony we heard earlier about the pedestrian safety at Deming and Buckland Road. I feel the need to get a, when I do cross that intersection, it, you feel the need to get across as quickly as possible because even with the crossing signal, it's, you feel like you're in no man's land in the middle of that, the four-lane road crossing. So I ask the commission and the applicant to consider the public interest and make every honest effort to make accommodations. I encourage the applicant, town officials, staff, the commission, town leaders, to work in good faith to balance legal obligation with the needs and wants of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Parks? You all set?
So again, I'm Margaret Glover, and I wanted to speak for one of my friends who left, who lives at the Berry Patch. I'm a, being a veteran, I am a big proponent of veterans' rights and how they're treated, especially when they're in their elder years and they need help in various ways. I mean, again, I'm not against affordable housing or multifamily, but one of my friends and is a resident at the Berry Patch, and he, and actually, he helped with Tom Del Nicky, sorry to point you out, but the bill that Mr. Del Nicky helped sponsor was because of the Berry Patch's predatory practices on his fifty-five and over residents at the Berry Patch. There's a YouTube video out there holding them. And I don't like to throw people under the bus, but again, what we saw at all the Berry Patch property, I'm sorry, all the Metro Realty properties were, again, that they weren't landscaped, and I agree with the last gentleman who was up here, that they need, if they want to do this, they need to rezone it. Not rezone it, but I mean, relanescape it, recome up, come up with a new plot to save the trees, to keep it green, to keep it consistent with the rest of what its surroundings are. But unfortunately, like another gentleman said, I feel like the reason at seventy-two units, it's a money venture. He's not out, they're not altruistic. They're not giving up things for wonderful people to help them maybe, but they're not doing this because they just are bleeding hearts. It's a money proposition, and it's a profit proposition. But again, I just wanted to come up here for my veteran fans, who always go to the, meet the mayor and meet the town manager meetings and have complained, ten of them at a time, about their rents being increased over and over at Berry Patch, about they needing, they're needing new washers and dryers, they never get them. There's one lady right now whose refrigerator isn't working correctly, and again, I'm sorry, I don't have names and numbers and addresses because I don't want to give them up, but there's a lot of residents who come to me and complain about how they're being treated at the Berry Patch. So if that is indicative, as somebody else said, present behavior is the best indication of future results. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers who would like to give testimony? One right here, and then the lady in the blue jacket.
I've spoken once before, John Samson, three-three-three Deming Street. I've heard a couple of comments, and two things that I want to add, actually three things. Number one was, Councilman just spoke concerning the widening or the shortening of parking lots and turning radiuses. I'm also a volunteer firefighter in this town, and I know that some of our trucks will not make that turn or come out of that complex with the, with the amount of room that's there without going into another lane or up on the curb because it's not wide enough in that area. Secondly, I'd like to, like the commission to also think about, and I failed to mention earlier on my notes, I found, I think we should add a three-way stop sign at Sealy and Deming Street to slow the traffic down. At the very least, maybe look at a stoplight at Deming and Ridge Road and Summit for the, for the mere fact that that stop sign is not visible in any direction. I think it's just an object standing there. It's optional to stop. My kitchen window looks to the east, and I can count probably twenty or thirty cars on a daily basis using that stop sign as an optional stop. So please look forward to looking at a three-way stop sign at Deming and Summit to slow the traffic down, or even possibly adding those speed bumps that they put around town in other areas, which don't work, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Lady in, is that purple?
Whatever color it's called in here. Vicky Margia, thirty-two Sealy Drive. Just wanted to add a few things. Metro Realty is not a good neighbor. Please look at the photos that Al Allard had. He made ten copies for all of you. A bunch of us went around and we looked at what apartments look like, any apartment. We looked through Tempo, and we looked through some of the ones in Manchester. There, people use balconies for storage. They're ugly as all sin. There's no way that you can shield it from the hill up above, and people will be looking at things that are very, very ugly. Metro Realty does not maintain their properties. There are nineteen tree stumps at Watson Farm right now. When they're, when they put up their landscape plans, it may look all pretty, but when things grow too old and they, they do not maintain them. There are stumps at Berry Patch, there are bushes that have been cut down near the dumpsters at Berry Patch, there are, please look at the photos and drive the areas yourselves. They do not belong anywhere near the gateway zone, and you shouldn't allow them to build another thing in town. They don't take care of stuff. There are trucks that park at one seventy-five Oakland on the grass because there are not enough parking, there's trucks that park on the dumpsters. It is really not attractive, and if part of the goal is to maintain a look in town, which is the goal of the gateway zone, they don't need it. This architecture does not resemble the single-family housing that it is near by any stretch of the imagination. The houses on Deming, Paul Pasqualoni's house is gorgeous. These houses don't match that. They compared a street traffic to a coffee shop, which is going to be a drive-through, which isn't allowed in the gateway zone, so their comparisons on the traffic study that said it was a factor of ten are not appropriate. We've heard the argument that there's no children in the apartments before, and I don't think that that's going to hold. As far as the impact to, on affordable housing on property values, if an affordable housing unit is put in a depressed area, it tends to increase the property value. When affordable housing is not put in a depressed area, it drops the property value. You guys have an obligation to maintain property value, and I think you have already impacted the property value for every person in the, in the Deming area by allowing Costco. I wrote my letter against Costco. You guys did not listen to people then. Please listen to us. You have most definitely impacted our property values by the decisions of this, of this court, of this thing. You know, please do not let the pressure to meet some quota for affordable housing cause you to make a bad decision, incite something that does not belong. It is not a transition zone. This is an anomaly on every side that it's going into, and, you know, please don't let the pressure drive you to do something that is inappropriate for this location. I, I get that there's a desire for affordable housing. The original zones for affordable housing were nine acres and forty percent. Somebody rewrote the rules without notifying a butters. One more time, you guys have rewritten the rules without notifying a butters to get it down, so it almost looks like it was written for this property. Maybe they had some help from Metro trying to find that location, but, you know, it should be something that fits in, and it should go next to other apartments, not as a standalone thing in the middle of nowhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Order, please. Please repeat that.
Okay. We walked the area the other day, just to see how walkable it was. I brought my backpack, I went to Stop &amp; Shop, I bought a few groceries, and was very hot and tired and sweaty by the time I got back. We also walked from Costco, both of those are over a half-mile uphill, and on the way back from Costco, we found what all the people from Costco are doing. They're leaving their grocery carts at the bus station on the corner of Buckland Road, and we really don't want that to be in our neighborhood. This is one picture, but these have been at that bus kiosk for a week now, and that's what's going to happen with the walkability in the grocery store.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Order, please. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this proposal? Please step forward. Hearing none, then we'll close the public comment, and we'll go to commissioners. And we have, it's ten oh five right now. We can keep the public hearing till ten thirty, and then continue it on the eighteenth of August.
No, that would be Tuesday, August fifteenth.
Oh, August fifteenth?
It's the Tuesday, correct.
Okay, so anyways, I'll turn to Commissioner Bernstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I need is...
Excuse me? Oh. You're absolutely right, I apologize. Steve, I thought you would have been all over me for that.
I was asleep at the switch.
Well, please, read the letters. How many you got, Steve, roughly?
Two are in favor. I've got fifty-one pages of... And I think one thing we do in other hearings is, if someone has already spoken, and I start to read your letter, just kindly say, I think all my points have been made, if that's true. If you still want your letter read, we'll read it. By the way, we also had about a hundred pages of letters that were given to us online, and I spent several hours reading them, I know other commissioners did as well, so these letters are having an impact. So this is a letter from James Bailey. I think you spoke earlier. I'll read it anyway. I'm writing to expect my enthusiastic support for application...
Steve, excuse me. If there's anybody who would like to have a conversation, if they could step out to the lobby, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm writing to express my enthusiastic support for application twenty-three twenty-five P. Housing is a need, people need places to live. Households currently spend approximately thirty percent of their income on rent, an all-time high. A primary contributing factor to high rental prices is a shortage of available rental units nationwide. South Windsor is not exempt from this trend by allowing a minority of local residents to block the construction of residential buildings that will meet the housing needs of the community. The rental affordability crisis will become exacerbated, which will only have negative impacts on South Windsor community. This letter is from Lori Thoreau. This email is to let you know that we support the zone change to two forty Deming Street, South Windsor, to allow multifamily assisted housing, living housing complex to be built there. We understand that Metro Realty is involved in partnership with MARC. I am unable to attend the meeting on Tuesday, July eleventh, so I'm sending this email. I'm wondering, Michelle, it seems like some of these letters were in the packet we got online, like these two. This letter was sent on June thirteenth, so must already be in the packet.
Just, I believe, in favor are letters six and seven have not been included. Need to be read to the record.
Maybe I'm reading them wrong.
Six and seven, you're right.
Great. So we start with number eighty on the opposing, here's number six and seven. Okay. This letter is from Arav Nair. I am writing to express my support for the proposed housing complex on Deming Street. Affordable housing plays a crucial role in benefiting both prospective residents and the broader community. Influx of new residents will stimulate economic activity in South Windsor, leading to increased local spending and consequently generating higher tax revenues for the town. Moreover, this project will create numerous employment opportunities, both during the building phase and in the long run, without ongoing jobs needed for the maintenance and management of the apartment complex. Furthermore, it is essential to consider the substantial cost savings that result from reducing poverty. Poverty can have adverse impacts on society, including increased crime rates... gain access to employment opportunities, and move away from dependence on welfare, thereby contributing to a safer and more prosperous community for all. Evidence from various other towns has consistently demonstrated that investing in housing initiatives affects the overall well-being of the community. Therefore, I believe that supporting the proposed housing complex aligns with these South Windsor long-term goals. This letter is from James Schinkoff. Regarding Metro Realty and Mark's proposal for development at 240 Demming Street, I would like to say that I, as a South Windsor resident, fully support this. Furthermore, as part of what is contained in the proposal, the support of housing with Mark's staff on site, this is an excellent opportunity for our community to fulfill a need for residents here. Too often, this is an overlooked population that can be marginalized. We must address this now without hesitation. Now, these are the new letters against, relatively few. This letter is from Don Holcomb. I'm writing to vehemently disagree and ask to reject application 2325P. The lack of transparency on this project is appalling. Rapid changes to the application and focus on 80% affordable housing, a visible intent to fill that space with Section 8 housing instead of other affordable housing options, including senior housing, is a betrayal of the townspeople. Personal conflicts of interest and committee members and town leaders are barely cloaked. If every town representative with a personal conflicting interest appropriately recruits himself from decision-making, we would not be saddled with this burden. Stop trying to sneak major town impact issues past the voters, put things like this to a vote by the townspeople. We clearly have no trust in the town officials to represent South Windsor appropriately. This is a letter from Catherine Sinnerth. I'm unable to attend the planning and zoning meeting pertaining to Demming Street proposed Metro Realty Apartments. I'm opposed to the proposed zoning change and the apartments. Not only will this increase traffic on an already busy residential road, I believe it will result in safety issues on Demming. The negative impact to the already full schools will affect every taxpayer in the town. Finally, this is not an appropriate location for apartments. There are many other locations along major roads such as Ellington and Sullivan that would be more suitable for such a project. This letter is from Anjusha Vasanthaparam. Hope I pronounce that reasonably correctly. I'm writing to strongly object to application 2325P for zone change and its location on Demming Street for the following reasons. One, overdevelopment and overcrowding in South Windsor. In the last four years, excuse me. In the last four years, there's been overdevelopment all over South Windsor, particularly in the Demming-Buckland area. Numerous banks and retirement homes, apartment homes, commercial office buildings, all the, the gigantic Costco and now Whole Foods have crowded our town, reduced our green space, and increased the noise levels in the area. And I'll ask if you wouldn't mind continuing with item two.
Okay, number two, traffic and safety concerns with all the overdevelopment in the area.
Mike, a little closer.
Closer?
Yeah.
Are they better?
Thanks.
All right. Traffic and safety concerns with all the overdevelopment in the area due to oversellous building. The through-traffic in our neighborhood has exponentially increased. It is already very difficult for us to get onto Demming Street due to the constant stream of vehicles. It is a nightmare for our neighbors on Demming Street who need to enter or exit their driveways. Walking or riding bikes is a safety hazard due to the constantly speeding cars. And making a left turn onto Buckland Road, Demming intersection is an accident waiting to happen at any second. The proposed application 23-25P will only exacerbate this terrible traffic situation. Number three, property valuation and taxes. All of us who bought, who bought homes in this neighborhood did so because it was meant to be that, a small family neighborhood. The proposed development is simply too large, it doesn't fit within the neighborhood, and is out of context for the locality. I am deeply concerned the impact this development would have on property values of our homes. Traffic leads to high maintenance of roads and infrastructure in our area, which will only increase our already high property taxes. That even a zone change application is being considered by the committee is disconcerting. Number four, impact on schools and related infrastructure. This application, all other similar ones, will overburden or crush our school system and its infrastructure. Our brand-new elementary schools are already overcapacity. Our teachers, administrators, and staff are overwhelmed due to this overcrowding while dealing with staffing and resource crisis. Middle and high schools are running out of space to accommodate our children, not to mention the lack of space in daycare facilities, preschools, and camps. We worry that this, this proposed development will affect the quality of care and education that our children will receive now and in the foreseeable future. In conclusion, I strongly urge you to not consider this proposed zone change and development. And thank you for your time and consideration. Want to the next one, Steve? Okay, the next following one is submitted on July 24th.
A little closer, Mike.
Sorry? Closer than a mic, yeah, sorry.
Hold it a little higher, maybe.
He comes, he comes.
You're done.
Okay. All right, this one is from Joshua Stern, dated July 24, 2023. It would be from someone else. That's Joshua Stern, I'll be all right, until it came to you. Okay. All right.
Should be another name somewhere.
Yeah, it'd be all right. Okay. Okay, this one came from Satish. No address, but South Windsor, Connecticut. Minutes for agendas, comments. I am opposed to propose, I am opposed to propose the zone change in construction listed in application 23-25P. As a resident of the neighborhood, I am concerned about the ever-increasing traffic, safety, overcrowding of schools, and increasing noise and pollution levels due to the overdevelopment of the Buckland-Deming area.
We'll get this done if we keep trading back and forth. So this is a letter from Sandra Cheeky from 32 Daywell Road. I am a lifelong resident and I am opposed to the proposed zone change on the former Calvary Church property.
What number is that letter, Steve?
That's 84.
Okay, thank you.
We've got two more to go. This letter is from Antonio Cosmapline. See, I'm not picking up an address. Oh yeah, 28 Grandview Terrace. I am unable to attend the planning and zoning meeting pertaining to the Demming Street proposed Metro Realty Apartments. I'm opposed to the proposed zoning change and the apartments. Not only will this increase traffic on an already busy residential road, I believe it will result in safety issues on Demming. The negative impact to the already full schools will affect every taxpayer in town. Finally, this is not an appropriate location for apartments. There are many other locations along major roads such as Ellington and Sullivan that would be more suitable for such a project. And the last letter... From Joan Walsh, who lives at 145 Arthur Drive. Email to PZ July 25 meeting, we are against the zone change for the apartments on Demming Street and Buckland Road.
Okay, thank you very much. We've got about eight minutes to start doing commissioner questions, comments. As I said, we're going to continue the public hearing to our meeting on August 15th and hopefully if we can get through some of the major comments that the applicant might need to review, to address for our next meeting, that might be our goal for tonight. But the public hearing should end tonight at about 10:30, so do you have any major questions, concerns, Paul, at this time?
Given how you just laid that out, Mr. Chairman, I would defer to you.
Okay. Commissioner Cavignaro?
Yeah, same thing. I mean, I, I do have a lot of questions, more questions than minutes left in our meeting. That being said, I guess the only important comment, I guess, for, for Metro Realty to know is that with what Counselor Kozakowski referred to earlier with the curb cuts, recommended changes, I'm in favor of that, I think, at least listening to the residents and seeing some changes that could be made. I think someone mentioned the garbages in that area. If there's a way to, to either relocate them, remove some parking spaces, move things around, make it work for that area, I'm fine with that. Again, those are the only pressing things that I could talk about, but again, I'll ask, save my questions for the next time.
Okay. Commissioner Vettiri?
I'm pretty much going to defer all. I think just the traffic study, so many questions were raised about the traffic study, you know, I, I was looking at the dates and everything, I think it's going to be easy enough, but I think that's something that should be addressed for the next time. I think the, yeah, anything else could wait for the next time. Thank you for what you've done.
Commissioner Foley?
I, I'm in agreement also with the traffic study. Something just doesn't seem right when we have residents that are doing their own personal traffic studies that are not in line, not even remotely close. I actually want to, I know Demming well, but I think for myself, I want to, I want to spend some time there on the weekend in a few different time slots, at a few different time slots. And just a comment, this is the, this is for a zone change. The residents here bought their properties knowing that this was the gateway zone and not to be, you know, this is, this is about changing the zone. So in fairness to them, if we open up Pandora's Box across the street, here we got RSK Kokom going to be the next ones coming in line, so when it comes to the property values, that's an issue with me.
Okay, just some of the residents testified that they got their properties way before the gateway zone, so I just want to point that out.
Yeah, but in 2006.
Right, yep. Commissioner Wagner?
Yeah, maybe our town planner, Mrs. Light, could tell us what's the actual situation on affordable units that we have now and how many we need? Somebody said 1,422 units, that didn't sound right to me. So what is it that we need to provide to meet the goals that the state has given us?
Again, we're at 6.7% of the 10% goal that we have. I, I'm not sure, if you want me, why don't you have me bring you back something at your 15th meeting, getting the latest numbers, but the reference that was to the fair housing law, that, that's not in place right now, so that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the 830G statute and the 10% of affordability.
So to get to 10%, how many new units?
I would have to calculate that out for you, but it's...
Yeah, that's a question for you.
Provide that for the next meeting.
Never mind. Just to be quick, I'm going to ask you to save that, okay? What taxes, will this, will this property pay any taxes? And what's it based on? Are they getting any special consideration and so on? Maybe the applicant can answer?
Steve, are you asking him to answer that now or bring it back at the next meeting?
Either way. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Ben Tripp, on behalf of the applicant, so the, the property currently is tax exempt as it's owned by the Calvary Church. It will pay tax, there will be, there's no requested tax abatement in connection with the, the property will be valued as any other multifamily community is valued in town by the assessor and taxed accordingly.
Thank you. I would note, some, some people were saying that this is, this zoning change is only applicable to AA 30, but the second sentence in that paragraph that defines what's allowed does mention commercial, and my understanding is that the gateway zone is a commercial zone, so now whether or not the way things are being combined is an issue, I'll leave for another discussion. I mean, one other comment and then pass it on. Wherever we build these affordable units, we're going to have an impact on the schools, so, I mean, that's a big concern, this impact, but I don't know how saying, "Build it somewhere else" is going to change anything with respect to the schools. With respect to the traffic on Demming Street, it sounds like we already have a pretty awful situation. The traffic study is really an incremental study, so I guess the question is, how much worse is it going to make it with, and that, that's really what they're talking about, so we'll have to wait and see on that. Other than that, I've got so many pages of notes that I have to think over before I make any more comments. Thank you everybody for coming out tonight and all of your comments and input.
Commissioner LeBlanc?
Yeah, thank you. Like Commissioner Wagner, I have pages of notes here and I have to sift through and I, I listen to everybody what they're saying and I'll say this upfront here now. Prior people on this commission came up with the gateway zone, the Buckland gateway zone, and I think to this point in time it has worked, and I'm not in favor of changing any, for any zoning changes within the Buckland gateway zone. We've had other proposals come through here and people want to put their shopping center closer to the road, that kind of thing, and there is a setback requirement in the gateway zone and, you know, I turned it down and all that, but it, to me, Buckland Road, I mean, I grew up here, I've been in this town for 44 years, back when they had tobacco barns on the road, yes, I worked on top of the hill on Demming Street and I worked on tobacco farms up there. That said, I think Buckland Road, for what it is and the amount of development pressures that have come to town and the area in general, it is a decent way to get into town and I want to keep that. I, I don't like when you come down Route 5 from the north and you take a left and you got these monster warehouses on the right and you have all these trucks taking a left on the right street. It doesn't, yes, they pay taxes, but it's not welcoming for the town of South Windsor, so I'm opposed to any changes to the gateway zone myself. I'll add more to this as we proceed, but I'm not convinced it's the right thing to do. I'm not against affordable housing, there's probably a lot of great places to put it, especially for the component for people with disabilities. I'm a huge proponent of the ADA in my former career as an engineer. I did a lot of work with ADA compliance with facilities, especially with public buildings, so I'm a huge proponent for that. However, I just, at this point in time, I'll, I can be right upfront here, I just don't think it's the right place. And you're putting a lot, a 10-pound bag of stuff in a five-pound area is how I'm looking at it. But that said, I'll look at everything and we have another meeting coming up and I'll speak more to that as we progress here, but thank you.
Okay, commissioners, I'll remind you, is there anything that needs to be said tonight that the developer will need to come back with? tonight that the developer will need to come back with us for an answer, bring an answer back to us? It is 10:30, we should be ending the public hearing for this evening, so unless there's anything that needs, the developer needs to bring back for information next time, I'll ask the last three remaining Commissioners, anything?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
There is.
Then we would need to extend the public hearing tonight with a two-thirds vote to go past 10:30.
I move we extend it no later than 10:45.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? And this is just the seated Commissioners. All those in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I'll be very quick, Chairman.
A little closer to the mic, please.
Yes, I'll be very close. Okay. So first of all, I think it's wonderful that we have such engagement with the community, both sides. You all came out, you lasted to the end, which, you know, we're all about done. But I won't be here until August 15th, so I did want to go on the record to say that in general, I'm mostly opposed to zone changes. I think we have established zones for reasons, there's been a lot of thought put into them, and I don't support zone changes in general. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Carey?
I just had a question about the 2006, but I can ask that for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kwarishi?
Yeah. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, both sides, and expressing their opinions and views. Having heard everything, I think we're going to go through and figure out what we need to do here, but for the applicant, you've heard the issues around traffic. I mean, I tend to agree with those because I've seen the traffic myself. You heard this issue about the schools, the numbers tend to usually be undercut quite a bit because that's not what we see in the school systems. So if there's a way you can address those in your, in your application as to how you, you know, how you came about the traffic study and the number for the school systems because that's not what we see here. Hopefully for next time, you can elaborate on that.
Okay, thank you. I understand, I have a question for the applicant. I understand the application includes twenty to twenty-five percent of the tenants will be reserved for individuals with intellectual disabilities, a population that's underserved in our town as well as the state. But I'm wondering what guarantees can be put in place to confirm this proposal actually becomes reality and doesn't get dropped somewhere along in the process? In this conceptual plan, will there be onsite management if approved? Will there be a superintendent or property manager living onsite to address the needs of the residents? And will there also be a rental office onsite? Commissioner Kozakowski, or I'm sorry, Councilman Kozakowski had a lot of good points and, you know, was interested in hearing the, if you want to call it, timeline or when events would happen, if you could address that at the next meeting, that would be important. I noticed, I walked the site and I noticed a difference in elevations there, and I had some concerns about that, but I know that's more of a site issue question, but I'm just wondering if there's going to have to be any type of retaining walls for the different elevations. I believe there's like a sixteen-foot grade change. I could be wrong, I just walked it, and I always thought I have a pretty good understanding of elevations, but I'd like to know more about that. And I think it's really important to protect tree lines between the project, the village, which is a benchmark site, and the grade change down to the village. And I am concerned about the vegetative setbacks and the buffers, existing buffers between the projects because that, what, that's what gives our over fifty-five residents at like the Berry Patch some form of security. Right now, they go out and they're walking in their driveways and they've got a nice lush pine vegetative buffer, but in scaling out the drawings and just looking at it closely, I think half of that buffer is going to get wiped out by construction if you use the same density that you've got proposed, which, you know, it looks like there'll only be like fifty feet between units, between like some on Berry Patch and the ones that are proposed for this project. So, and that might be deck-to-deck or whatever, but it is, it does seem pretty tight. So those are the issues I just wanted to make sure I mentioned tonight. Also, there was discussion about, or not even discussion during this, but just reading the narrative, a pumping station, and I'm curious about noise and maintenance for that, stormwater basin, and location of that. So I think that's about all I've got to mention tonight. Commissioners, is there anything else that needs to be mentioned tonight or should we do a motion to continue? Commissioner Wagner?
Typically, if we're just doing a site plan, it's because the applicant can build something by right, and we're really dealing with the details. For any other zone change, it's really now a political decision. We're an elected, an elected commission with appointed alternates, so we are very sensitive to input from the public. But I'm wondering, given the atmosphere of this whole state legislature and affordable housing, how much flexibility do we have in, in, you know, denying this sort of a change?
I just want to make a brief comment. Again, as mentioned before, we currently have a moratorium against affordable housing projects in that a developer cannot just come in and if the town denies it, has the upper hand to go to the courts and win. We have a moratorium against that because we earned enough points over the last years to qualify. That moratorium will expire in October of 2024. So any project that comes in after October 2024 that meets the 830G requirements of the state statutes, you are no longer protected from a denial. In other words, if you deny it, it would go through the court systems and you would have to defend your denial, which is a little bit more difficult to do than a typical denial.
Thank you.
Commissioners, would someone like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to August 15th?
I move we continue the public hearing to August 15th.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Town staff?
Just, we would, plan on moving this back to the town hall. I think we could probably accommodate our crowd on August 15th at the town hall.
Okay.
For the public.
And that would be at the town hall. That's what our goal is. Applicant, is there anything else you need to mention tonight? Okay. Then we have a motion and a second. No further discussion, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the motion to continue the public hearing to August 15th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.